To order, welcome to the September 8th meeting of the School Board. The mission of the West Contra Costa. I apologize. To access translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available via Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. I'd like to welcome you all to the September 8th meeting of the West Contra Costa USD Governing Board. The mission of the West Contra Costa Unified School District is to prepare students for post-secondary education and to be responsible, thinking, contributing members of our global society. We believe in public education as the most important function in a democratic society. We believe we must treat everyone with courtesy, dignity, and respect. Provide safe and nurturing environments in which to learn, teach, work, and participate. Serve our students by working as partners with our community to develop well-rounded lifelong learners and contributing members of a global society. Take responsibility for our behavior and performance to ensure the highest possible achievement of all students, employees, and our school community. Provide equitable and essential communication and support for successful learning, teaching, working, and participating. Respect, celebrate, and welcome the diversity, uniqueness, and contributions of all members of our school community. The board members should not subordinate the education of children and youth to any partisan principle, group interest, or the members' own personal interests. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities on agenda and non-agenda items in person, through the Zoom app, and by telephone. We have changed the public comment format, which will now occur at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for one hour and includes any agendized item or non-agendized item within the jurisdiction of the district. The time allotted for each speaker has also been extended to two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak on Zoom, your hand must be raised before public comment begins. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. The public is invited to attend and participate in all WCC USD Board of Education meetings. Dr. Hurst, is there a report from closed session?
Yes, sir, there is. We'd like to report out that the board unanimously approved Ryan Phillips as the Director of Communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Public, we are now going to begin to move into our public comment section of the agenda. If you have public comment, please raise your hand now because once public comment starts, once we really start the item, you won't be able to to raise your hand. So raise them now, please. Okay, I see eight folks in the Zoom with their hands raised. Any more? Going once, going twice. If there's somebody here in the audience that wants to do public comment, please submit your request form to staff. Going once, going twice. We have nine people on the Zoom. And ten people, Ms. Rachel Archibald is the last person. Please start. Do we have any public comment here in the building? Okay.
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you very much. So let's go to public comment online on the Zoom with Ms. Archibald being last.
First public speaker is Regina Bates. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, this Regina Bates. Am I supposed to be speaking in regards to the agenda, or can I bring up something that's been going on?
So right now. I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button. That feedback was because of me. So right now, and I didn't say this, public comment is on any item that's on the agenda or not on the agenda. So if there's something that you want to speak about that is within the jurisdiction or the purview of the district, you are welcome to do that now, even if it's not on the agenda.
I'm a concerned parent and grandmother, and three children go to the school district. I graduated from Deanna, eighty-five, and I'm just amazed at the problems I've been having with the online. Now, far as virtual academy, there is a waitlist. I understand that. So I've been told. And then also, the Vista School situation is not very feasible because you only get thirty days, and then that's it. And then the child has to go back into the classroom. So my child, one of my children, have anxiety, okay, going back to the school. And she's a four-point-oh student. She's going to be a nurse, and she's very distraught at her grades because the teachers do not communicate. It's like we're, you know, submitted with the leftovers or something like that. Like, I don't understand you guys' process, but this is the second time today that I found out another one of my children has received an F for a test she was not aware of. So you guys are failing the children that are taking online school. Now, I'm in the process right now of talking to K through twelve, already done it. I'm just waiting to, you know, finish up the uploading process of the documents, but until then, they have to stay in school. And we're not getting the support, and I'm thinking about even putting my own money to tutoring because my children will not be failing because you guys want them to go back to school, and there's high rates of COVID right now. We're all vaccinated, but they still don't feel safe, and I don't feel comfortable. So I'm, you know, I go to school online at Laney College as well, and so I don't have a problem with that, but we need some help.
Our next public speaker is Cheryl. Please state your first and last name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
My name is Cheryl Phantom Jahan, and I have three children in the school district, one at Deanna, one at Collins in the deaf and hard of hearing program, and one at Valley View in kindergarten. I find the reporting system, as an ER nurse, and my husband is likewise an ER nurse, as well as a public health nurse. The reporting system that Deanna and all the school district is using is not very clear and is in contradiction with the CDC as well as Contra Costa County Public Health Guidelines as far as how many are infected, how many kids are sequestered or quarantined, et cetera. So even today, it reported that on the seventh, there were no infective processes at Valley View, and I know for a fact several classrooms there are shut down because of COVID positive cases, and it's listing zero as COVID positive cases. Where I just received an email that as of the third, there are COVID positive cases at Valley View. So I'm really concerned about the reporting process, and this Predacon, a company that you all have hired to do the testing, has not been real forthright in their disclosures and getting information back to us in a timely manner. I checked with Predacon, and many of us, you know, they want our insurance information. Even though this is voluntary, I'm concerned about many people getting a big medical bill eight months down the road after recently testing that I checked with my insurance company that says they will not pay for this if it's not medically necessary and ordered by a physician. So I'm very concerned about that. Now, I do have the opportunity because of my privilege of being a nurse that I have access to antigen testing and have watched my kids carefully. And I have, all of my kids are currently out of school because of a shutdown at Collins and because I'm not sure about my other two kids, and I'm waiting for HR testing to come back before I return them to school. So if you could please update your website, that would be very, very helpful.
Our next public speaker is Marissa Glidden. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, good evening to the board and the superintendent. My name is Marissa Glidden. I am a third grade teacher at Verde Elementary School and president of United Teachers of Richmond. I am deeply disappointed to have to be here again tonight discussing the exact same issues we discussed two weeks ago, the same issues we discussed two weeks before that, and the same issues we had been flagging that may become potential issues all summer. Students and staff want to be in person at school. They are thrilled to be back. But they also want and deserve the district to be doing their best to keep students and staff safe. That is not happening right now. The district is not doing their best to keep employees and students safe. They are not following the California Department of Public Health guidelines to keep people safe. The issues remain the following. Number one, notification. Employees and families have been inconsistently notified of positive cases if they are ever notified at all. In general, communication has been absolutely unacceptable. Number two, contact tracing. Close contacts are not being contacted. Number three, quarantine. Students are not being quarantined, or they're being quarantined incorrectly. Modified quarantine means that students must be tested twice weekly per the California Department of Public Health. That's not happening on our campuses. Four, cleaning. Cleaning procedures are not documented, they're inconsistent, and not up to standard. Teachers have told us that the rooms are not being left vacant after a positive case. There is no enhanced cleaning or sanitation, and the district refuses to hire additional custodians. Five, the virtual school. A lot of students and families are asking for the virtual school, and the district has dropped the ball. There should be an option for students and families that want the virtual academy. We are asking the district to be transparent, to follow the state guidelines. It is the fourth week of school, and our students and employees deserve better. They deserve to be safe at school and at work, and are counting on you to fix these issues promptly. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is George Purley. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Superintendent and trustees. I need to express my extreme frustration and disgust at how my wife has been treated by her current principal and her district. And she was told to go back to her office in Lebon de Jean after more than a year. What she found out was that her computer didn't work, her phone didn't work, and there was no fire extinguisher. Let me repeat this. No working phone, no working computer, no fire extinguisher. It is a ten-minute drive from Alvarado to Jean. It seems that the principal never bothered to see whether it was effective or safe for her to return in person to her office. If any trustee or superintendent had their spouse or significant other sent back to their office under these circumstances, how would you react? Would you not be livid and immediately demanded the person responsible for this be held to account? My wife has an asthma condition, which flared up the day she went back, so she had a COVID test. She never received the result and was told that her application was lost in the computer. She took another test a week ago and just got the results today. Again, would either trustees or the principal or superintendent put up with this if it was their wife or significant other? When ESL teachers asked their students whether they wanted to return to classes online or in person, one hundred ninety out of two hundred and seven students said they preferred online classes. This principal instead produced a master schedule without consulting with the teachers or their union, which had many more in-person classes, which forced some teachers to either teach in person or lose their guts. Anyone thinking about this even for a few minutes would realize that the needs of K through twelve students and adult school students are different. Other adult schools in the Bay Area have had online classes for years. My wife has decades of experience building and supporting this program. The current principal and district should not be pushing their one-size-fits-all agenda on the ESL program. They're either being obtuse, or they just do not care about either the students or the teachers. Remember, no phone, no computer, no fire extinguisher. So which do you think it is? I respectfully ask that the trustees do the right thing and put the adult school issue on the next agenda. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Sean Vaughn. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Shawnee Vaughn. I am the union representative for the Teamsters classified staff. I'm here tonight to address the board regarding our safety concerns. The district has deeply failed to keep our communities safe, and most important, our students. For months, the district has failed to report all positive COVID-nineteen tests to the county. The district has also failed to report any and all positive cases to the community, the staff, and the union. The district has hired a testing agency who does not have the ability to report positive cases in a timely manner. We deeply play, we deeply place our community, we're deeply placing our community at risk. It has been reported to our students and workers sometimes way over a week to receive their test results. The district has not come up with a contract tracing protocol that works effectively to keep our stakeholders safe. Therefore, we rely on our bargaining union members to keep the union leaders informed and updated on cases. This, the workers are the ones that are keeping this community safe. The district has not come up with a solid cleaning plan to keep the community safe. The district emails, has emailed the community on several occasions, indicating that they will hire additional custodian staff to deal with the COVID, excuse me, the learning COVID protocols. To date, that has not happened. Our custodian staff is struggling to keep up with their regular detail, let alone with what to do when it comes to a positive test. The district leadership has failed to lead and guide us to utilize our strengths. Whether we, whether we see almost intentionally excluding the union members and leadership in helping design and implement protocols, we have a meeting with the district leadership this Friday to address these concerns. I, we highly encourage the board to give your negotiated direction on how we can protect our employees and our students and be transparent with us and the, meaning the union representatives, so we can best support you in your goals to make this a safe learning experience.
Next public speaker is Don Gosney. Please unmute yourself.
Long last tonight. We should have a discussion and action determine how much this board and the people running the district value the input from the community they're supposed to represent. The sixty-four thousand dollar question, though, is whether the people who elect the board members and pay extremely hefty taxes to fund the district will have their voices heard, or whether the voices of the people will have to be sacrificed so staff and the board can have more time to talk, and talk, and talk. As I've emailed you all, the last meeting that you posted was a prime example of why the public should be allowed to speak when the agenda item is being discussed. We had a great presentation on the first week and a half of the school year and how the district, the students, the teachers, and the parents were dealing with educating our youth while working under the district's new guidelines to protect everyone from the COVID cooties floating around. The problem was that the public was required to make their comments before hearing a single word of that presentation. It was obvious that there was a vast amount of information that was not made available to them in the packet when they were allowed to make their comments. When this board took control at the beginning of the year, one of the first things they did was to kill the standing reports. All kinds of things were said about how they could still make their presentations at committee meetings, and their comments would be passed on to the full board and the public. But here it is, more than eight months later, and not a single word from those committee reports has been forwarded to the full board or the public. It was as if, it was as if we had gone back to the days when we had elected officials and very highly paid district officials that went back to their policy of bamboozling the public. These promises were a load of bulldukey. Reinstate the standing reports. There are sixteen groups listed, but in reality, it's rare that as many as four groups spoke at any given meeting. Most of the time was only two, maybe three. Split the list in half, so half do it at the beginning of the, of the first meeting of the month, and half at the second meeting. Allow the public to speak on an agenda item during regular public comment so they can make their comments early in the meeting and then switch back to jeopardy. You also need to allow speakers to speak when the item is being discussed so the speakers can have the information they need to make reasonable comments. I have a lot more, but once again, time is out.
Next public speaker is Asada Wilson. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. This is Asada Wilson, educator at Richmond High School, treasurer of United Teachers of Richmond, and president of the Black Educator Network, also known as BEN. I echo the sentiment of those that expressed their disappointment regarding testing and Predacon, so I'm going to change it up a bit. I received this message from a student who is not in my class this year, but felt they needed to share this with me. Things have been going relatively well, considering the state of education last year. However, there's one thing that's been gnawing at my soul: incessant use of the word "blank" by people who aren't black. Even as I type this in, name of teacher's class, I hear it. This misconduct makes me highly uncomfortable and irate. I want to speak up, but I realized that I can't check the majority of the school population. The fact that it's been normalized disgusts me beyond belief. Furthermore, some students would argue that I'm the one who's out of pocket and tripping for having these feelings. This issue must be addressed one way or another, whether that means PSA's during homeroom, posters around campus, or an entire assembly. It makes no difference to me. Please forward all of this to all relevant parties. I'd like correspondence as soon as possible. So in the midst of all of this, where is the situation regarding racist equity? This was the hot topic last year. Remember, we were in distance learning, yet we weren't able to make this more effective for all of our campuses on our sites. So essentially, when we walk back onto campus, we have walked back into disease, courtesy of COVID. We're also walking back into systemic racist practice that are being, still taking place on our sites that no one has yet to really a hundred percent address. It is not up to persons like myself. It is not up to OASA. It's not up to ASAP. It is up to the district to eliminate this kind of speech that is taking place in our classrooms and not calling our teachers out that are allowing this to take place in our campus. Sure, we may have a rainbow coalition of a school board, but that's mean nothing when you do not address what's happening to our young black students in this district. Please do something about this. Thank you.
Next public speaker is Mims Family. Please state your first and last name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Pat Mims. And I agree with everything that's been shared. However, I wanted to talk about something that is a little more important on my end because I'm concerned that my third-grade son, who's been in class for four weeks, has no set teacher. There's no curriculum. They're basically, to have somebody in there as a placeholder. If we weren't in a privileged position to be, to purchase a math book, we don't know what we would do. We have no materials. We have nothing for the education of our children. I'm hearing a great deal about the surrounding elements of school, but the most important piece of why our kids are attending the school is foreign education, and nothing has happened in four weeks. I can't speak to the other grades. I can say that our teacher has not received any curriculum and is doing the best that she can in keeping the kids engaged in learning. We, we still do not have an official permanent teacher. We're almost four weeks in here, and we're in limbo. Parents should not be asking how can we purchase books or what we need to do to support. You're getting, the state is getting money for this. Our district is getting money for this, and we're not receiving anything from it at this point. We should have all the materials necessary to complete the independent study at Vista we signed up for. Yes, we didn't want to send our kid back, not during these times. However, this option that you gave that sounded so great on paper, so great on paper, is not happening in real time. And that is the challenge, is when things are said up top and they're not being held accountable down low, you end up in situations like this where individuals are calling you out. And I challenge you to take the calling out on this and do something about it. What is SEL? Okay, you said at one point we would get into social emotional learning. That hasn't happened. Is just talking with individuals to hold that place? Social emotional learning? What does that really consist of?
Complete your comment.
Thank you.
Next public speaker is Noelia Cano. Please unmute yourself. We will move on to our next public speaker, Rochelle Archibell. Please unmute yourself.
Hi there, this is Rachel Archibald. I have a daughter in fourth grade at Kensington Hilltop. I first want to just commend the district leadership and Dr. Hurst on bringing schools, you know, bringing kids back to school in person. I think a lot of effort has went and gone into that, and I appreciate that. And my daughter has had a wonderful time being back in person five days a week with her peers and with her teacher. So I think there's a lot of positive things happening. So I don't want to discount that. I am a little bit concerned about the updating of the COVID dashboard, and I'm wondering if there's any specific steps being taken to address any discrepancies there between the school reporting and the dashboard. And then I am also concerned about Predacon and just a sense that I get from them that they are really under-resourced for what they've taken on. And I'm wondering what the board is doing, or the superintendent is doing, or the district is doing to hold them accountable, and at what point, you know, like what, what, what goals are they being asked to meet? And at what point will you be looking for different vendors? Because I don't have a lot of confidence in them after the past few weeks. It's been very, it's gotten a little bit better, but it's very uneven, and that's unsettling. So those are my only comments, but thank you very much for bringing school back in person. My kid is enjoying it a lot. Thank you.
This concludes our public comment for the night.
Thank you very much. To the audience, I do want to say that Trustee Reckler was in the room, listening to public comment the entire time. She had to move away from where she was to be able to better hear the audio. But she was listening to you all. Thank you to everyone who called in. We're gonna move on to item B4, which is Agenda Review and Adoption. Dr. Hurst, do you have anything that you need to take off of this agenda?
Sir, I would like the board to consider removing item under C3, under Contracts. And in the item C3, there are a couple of contracts I would like the board to remove. The first one, the vendor is BACR, Community Schools and Health Centers. The second one that we would like the board to remove is Community Education Partnerships. And again, they're both under C3 contracts. So those two contracts being removed, please.
Okay, Dr. Hurst, we're gonna take those off of the agenda completely. Board, and tonight we are starting in the order, the natural order, which is Trustee Smith Folds and Trustee Area 1 first. Does any board member have any item that they want to, you know, pull off consent?
President Phillips, can you hear me?
I can, ma'am. Go ahead.
I would like to pull C1.
C1?
C1, yes.
Okay, and you're pulling C1 for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, is that it, ma'am?
No, I'm sorry. That's all I want to pull. I do have something under E, Action Items. Would you like me to talk about that now or wait?
You want to talk about it?
Let me just give you some, a little bit more clarity. I would like to move 3, E3, before. I would like it to be the first item we discuss in action. At the last board meeting, we said that recommendation from the superintendent on public comment would be the first action item.
I did agree to that. I remember. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Other board members? Okay, so what I'm gonna do, I'm asking for a motion to approve the agenda with the following changes. The contracts for BACR and Community Education Partnership, which are on C3, to remove those items completely off of the agenda. That's the BACR contract and Community Education Partnership. C1, we're going to pull that for discussion. We're not taking it off of the agenda. We're just gonna pull it for discussion. And then item E3, which is the recommendation from the superintendent on public comment. We're gonna hear that as our first action item, and I have a motion to approve that agenda as I just expressed.
So move, President Phillips.
Move by Gonzalez Hoi.
Reckler second.
Seconded by Reckler. Board on the vote. Smith Folds, you're starting us off.
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Trujillo, yes.
Phillips, yes. The motion carries unanimously. Now we're going, sorry, the motion carries unanimously. We're going to go on to item B5, which is approval of the minutes. These are minutes for August 2nd and August 11, 2021. Board, are there any corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion? For the minutes?
Sorry. I apologize. I unmuted the wrong thing. I moved the minutes for both meetings.
I do that at least three times a meeting. It's okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, move by Gonzalez Hoi, and seconded by Christian. On the vote, Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Trujillo, yes.
Phillips, yes. It passes again unanimously. Now we're going to go on to our consent items. Remember, we took two contracts off from C3, that's BACR, and Community Education Partnership. We've also pulled item C1 for discussion. So with those caveats, can I please have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
Reckler moves.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so it's moved by Reckler, seconded by Gonzalez Hoi, to approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Smith Folds, can you begin the roll call?
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Trujillo, yes.
Phillips, yes. Thank you very much. Now we are going to go on to the superintendent's report. Board, before we begin, we're gonna try something a little different this evening. Maybe it's not so much different because it's similar to what we did when we were having the study sessions. I'm still asking you all to limit your questions to four, to make sure that we're all able to ask questions and make comments. But we're going to get individual reports from various cabinet members. And so what we're gonna try tonight is when one person gives the report, I'm gonna let everybody ask four questions on that report. Please make sure that you don't ask questions about things that they haven't presented. These questions are for clarification about the things they've actually presented tonight. If you have other questions for them, please send those to the superintendent offline. But this is a way to try to allow you to ask some more questions. And I think it's, we're gonna try it, okay? So, Dr. Hurst, you want to begin? And then after each presentation, I want to pause so the board members could ask the questions if they have them.
Good evening, board trustees and public. We'd like to say we have a report that is designed to acknowledge our gaps and our deficiencies within the district, but also to share a plan, a thoughtful plan, on how we are being solution-oriented and how we're gonna be moving forward in several areas. So that's what you'll be hearing tonight, and we're gonna start off by talking about communications. We can go to the next slide. So we wanted to share, again, an acknowledgement of our gaps in communication. And just being very clear that we've met with several groups, parent groups, PTA groups at several schools. And we've listened to all of you. We're still listening now, and we do want to say that we hear you. We do acknowledge that we have some gaps. We aren't here to make excuses, but to share with you, here's how we're moving forward to improve. So one of the things that we wanted to share with you is that we will be bringing on a new Director of Communications. You just heard our Board of Trustees approve Ryan Phillips to come in as our new Director of Communications. That's gonna be a big support for our current staff. Currently, we have two members supporting our district, managing the district of about 30,000 students. So we're excited about the new Director of Communications. We also have recently interviewed for a new communications assistant, and that person will be soon coming onboard. So this is a big step for us in the communications department. What I've been shared is that we have not had a team of four on our communications team for a long period of time. So that's gonna be a bonus for us and it's gonna allow us to really investigate how we better support internal and external communications moving forward. We also want to share with you that we have, as of yesterday, working with a communications group that's called Nichols Strategy. I thought they could be here tonight just to introduce them to you. They were not able to be here, but we have a support plan in place. And that is to make sure that we're supporting communications, internal and external, until we have our Director of Communications onboard and also our new communications assistant onboard. So they'll be here helping us. And we have talked to them about all of our needs, all of our gaps, as shared with us by you, by parents, and teachers and community groups as well. We also know that we've expressed some goals over the next several weeks. One is to increase our response time. Also focusing on communicating weekly to our community. Also coming up with a communications plan. The communications plan will certainly be available to the board, but also to the public. And really, it's an opportunity for us to share our goals in this plan, objectives. The audiences for each one of our goals, they'll be reaching out to, strategies, materials that are gonna be needed, and then presenting a timeline for our communication plan. So we'll initiate that communication plan with Nichols Strategy, but then our new Director of Communications will be taking on that communication plan. And we're seeking input from stakeholders in our communication plan as well. Another piece that Nichols Strategies will be focusing on is staff training. We have outlined some goals. So besides COVID response and improving our communication around COVID response, we have a Betty Reed Soskins Middle School ribbon cutting on September 22nd. They are helping us to communicate that out as well. We met with them yesterday when they came onboard. We also are having them build our FAQ webpage. And if you click on that link briefly, so the FAQ webpage will be on the front of our webpage. And what we will share with you is that this webpage is being built by support from Nichols Strategy. And one of the reasons why we're bringing them onboard to help us with this component, one, we think that we can really point our public, parents, community members, staff, employees as well, to this website. And you can get answers to questions. And again, it's in draft form right now. It is a capacity issue for us internally, which is why we're having Nichols Strategies build this. So we wanted to let you know it is live on our webpage, and they will be building this FAQ this week. Can we go back to the presentation, please? They're also gonna be helping us in our campaign for human resources recruitment. If you can go back to the previous page. And then a big piece that we are talking to them about is our website. When I came onboard, certainly a website was a big conversation piece in making sure that it's organized and the content. So we're gonna have Nichols Strategies start the planning process for us, but also for our new Director of Communications, having that person, Ryan Phillips, take on the lead once they're here and continue the planning, continue meeting with stakeholders, stakeholder engagement, to hear the voices of what we want the reorganization and redesign of our website to be. And that process is going to be beginning again this month. So that's a goal for Nichols Strategy. So I wanted to let you know that we are being very attentive to what we're hearing in all of the sessions, and this is how we're planning to move forward to make sure that we improve communications across the district and externally as well. Next page. And then we wanted to share with you our concerns that have been coming to us from our feedback website, which is feedback@wccusd.net. So here you could see that we received approximately 320 responses as of the start of the school year. Additional 150 responses have been collected since the return to school planning process. And the feedback collection is collected through that website that I just shared. And we have some initial trend data that we are seeing, and here's the top concerns that's coming in from all of those responses. Masking, so appropriate masking, appropriate fit. Response time deals with communication and how we're communicating out. Testing, billing of results related to COVID response and testing and insurance. COVID dashboard has also been a concern, staffing and teacher shortage, and class size. So we wanted to report out to you, those are the responses and the trends from communication. But more importantly, in this particular two slides, we wanted to share that we acknowledge our gaps in communication, but we have a plan in place to really fine-tune and move forward internal and external communication. Thank you.
Dr. Hurst, is this the next presentation at Services? Okay, so with your portion, we're gonna let trustees answer, answer, ask some questions if they have them. Trustees, please limit your questions to four, and then those four only on what was presented. If you have more than four or questions on things that were not presented, please send those to the superintendent offline. Trustee Smith Folds, you're up.
Okay, it's a little difficult to present only on what's presented because I don't know if something's gonna come up that I haven't seen the presentation, so I don't know what's gonna come up. But I have a question about communication. Dr. Hurst, parents were told that there's a handbook coming out to help with communication. Have those handbooks been distributed to parents? Am I on mute or am I being heard?
Dr. Hurst is gonna move his location for a moment because he's having trouble hearing you with the audio, so he'll, he'll answer your question. He's just moving.
Can you ask your question again, ma'am? I can hear you now.
Yes, sir. Parents were told that there was going to be a handbook distributed to them that would help aid them in communications. Have those handbooks been distributed to parents?
I'm not aware of a handbook, a communication handbook. I know I spoke to parents last night, and I shared with them that we will be posting a communication plan on the website, but not aware of a handbook.
So again, I'm just asking if we can ask questions about what they have presented. I'm not, we're, you know, we don't want to play gotcha, just what they presented.
So I'm not trying to play gotcha. I'm trying to ask about communications. Thank you for that answer, Dr. Hurst. The second question, who in the district is the person that parents need to contact as the communication lead about? about specific COVID circumstances? For example, if you have Kaiser, you have an advice nurse that you call and you talk to and you give your symptoms and they kind of tell you what to do. Do we have that type of communication person in the district currently that deals specifically with parents' issues or scenarios around COVID?
Yeah, so anything COVID related has been going to our safety COVID response person, Mr. Booker.
Thank you so much. The third question. How are schools consistently communicating about COVID protocols to their parents, their staff, and their teachers?
I think that probably can be addressed when we get to COVID response.
Thank you. The final question. After watching the last few weeks, I've noticed that some district, sometimes the district responds differently to cases. What is the communication tool used that triggers different reactions to different sites with their cases or their outbreaks? Or does that need to fall under COVID response?
Yes, that would go under COVID response as well.
Thank you so much. Those are the questions about communication. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Christian, do you have any questions about what Dr. Hurst just presented?
Yes, thank you. Go back to the community feedback and updates and in those areas, just going to just briefly just on the masking. Is the masking, when it comes like to all the schools, principals, everybody is pushing, pushing that drumbeat, you know, consistently day in and day out.
So what we are doing is we're using our executive directors to reinforce the messages and the mandates that we have set from the beginning of the year. So those expectations have been set by me in meetings and also in written form. But we are utilizing our executive directors of the schools to reinforce those messages around masking.
All right. And then the animal will be sending around the testing. Do the testing actually pull out, do the stuff start there at the school or is it brought to the school then it spreads once it gets, comes into the school?
Anything? Anything related to testing, COVID testing that will fall under COVID response?
So board members, I just want to remind you, he's breaking these out. I'm going to let you ask questions with, for each presentation. So you don't, I promise I will. So the next person is Gonzalez.
Thank you. Sorry. Dr. Hurst. I am not sure if this goes here or for COVID response, so please let me know if you'd like to answer it later. Whenever we have a positive case at schools, do side administrators have access to a communications tool that they're able to use to then send to families? Like a Google Drive, they're able to download this communication templates and then use the same templates consistently per school?
So that will fall under COVID response, but the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you. I won't ask it later, so I appreciate that.
Mrs. Ruffler?
Thank you. Would you be able to repeat again what the concerns are around masking that are coming in through the feedback to at wccusd.net email?
Yes, it's the wearing of the mask. So some students not wearing a mask, but also fit as well, improper fit.
And in regards to fit, is that being handled at the school site level at the, does a let her go home? What's the, the thinking around that?
So I think maybe that would come in from, from Louis as well, but I know we have PPE at the sites and the expectation is that all the administrators are making sure that the masks are fit for our students and for our adults. And if not, that they give them the mask that fits. So we do have enough mask. And what we've been telling staff and administrators is if they don't have the PPE, that they can always contact Mr. Freeze in his department, get the PPE, the appropriate PPE to the students and to the staff.
Okay, thank you. That, that's all I have for this round.
Mr. Trujillo, any questions on this first part of the presentation?
Yes. In terms of communication, is there an easier way for students to access? Like access, like as in give feedback, like a way they can access the right people to give feedback to that isn't on the school website or through email? Because many students don't use email as their primary source of communication. So is there perhaps a social media page or a place on each school site where they can give their feedback to and make sure it makes it to the district?
That's a good question, sir. I'm taking note of that. And I'll go back to the team and we'll talk about our students and how they can give feedback appropriately. Thank you.
Mr. Trujillo, is that it?
No, Bill. Thank you.
Okay. Larisha Martin, Ed Services.
All right, next slide. Good evening, everyone. I am going to be talking about the Virtual Academy and providing an update there. We are currently enrolled at 248 students. There are currently 21 students who have had IEP meetings and have been admitted to Virtual Academy. There are currently on the waitlist 267 students on the waitlist. We also did a process of when Ms. McCormick, Principal Ms. McCormick, who was holding these sessions with parents. We had many parents who decided based on what Virtual Academy was providing to transfer back to their homeschool. So 82 families transferred back to their homeschool. The students who moved from the virtual K-12 to Vista Independent Study, which is the traditional high school that existed before the Virtual Academy, the Vista Independent Study, we have 18 students who transferred there. And that was also after engagement with the parents. Parents decided either based on credit needs or a better fit that they wanted to actually go to Vista Independent Study. So we had 18 students who went there. And then there was also the suggested cap of 350 students. The current staffing is that we have seven general education teachers, three RSP teachers, and two new teachers who are onboarding. Some of the concerns that have been raised by parents in the community are that really there's high demand for Virtual Academy. There's a waitlist and low response from the waitlist. Also lack of an instructional schedule, materials and curriculum. Next slide, thank you. So based on that, these are some of the things that have happened or have been put in place. So schedules have now been created with math, science and ELA. Teachers have been assigned to students. There's also the offering of one-on-one support, small group support, live interaction and elective offerings are available. Textbooks, technology, software and supplies have been delivered, ordered or distributed to students. What hadn't, which had not happened before when school started because understanding there was high demand and the school was not prepared for more than 75 students. Planned engagements, there were, have been planned engagements to move students off the waitlist. There was an engagement on nine seven and nine nine, or was nine nine is actually tomorrow. There was one yesterday and there was one last week at six o'clock. There's also been a job posting created for independent study teachers and two teachers were selected from this posting. Some other next steps that we have been coordinating with the attendance department, which is we've sent, send a letter, a written message to all students who have been waiting for a response. The email will outline the current staffing situation that limits enrollment. For students in grades seven through 12, we will highlight the possibility of joining the Vista Hybrid Program by enrolling back at their current school and requesting a transfer to Vista or completing the Alternative Education Referral Form. Close current interest form and replace with the new Google form with an automated message indicating to remain enrolled at current school unless otherwise contacted. This has actually already been done. Possibly an abbreviated version of letter listed on step one, well, which is actually step five. So that is where we are currently with Vista Virtual Academy.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Is the whole Ed Services presentation just on the Virtual Academy?
It is currently.
Okay. Say currently, we can't change it in the middle of the.
No, 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 no. Going forward in the future, it will be more than Virtual Academy.
Okay, I got you. I got you. Okay. Trustee Smith Folds, four questions on what was just presented.
Ms. Martin, what is the demographic of the current Vista Academy students? Since we talked about students in the presentation, what's the demographic of those students?
I will have to get back to you on that. I do not have the demographic breakdown, but I can email that to you.
Thank you. And since we talked about, in the presentation, we talked about the increase in students and the increase in staffing. What's the impact on the budget because the school was only planned for 75 students?
I will defer to Tony Wold on the impact to the budget for the Virtual Academy.
Thank you. Is Dr. Wold available?
He is.
Okay.
Yes, sorry. So at this point, we had planned in our budget for the movement of positions. This has built into the staffing that we had planned for our budget right now.
So there's no financial impact, Dr. Wold?
At this point, there's no new financial impact because we had planned for additional teaching positions that would be moved into the Virtual Academy as students moved into there.
And Dr. Wold, a follow-up question. When will there become an impact? At what point will there be a financial impact? What number of students makes it a financial impact? What number of teachers is going to make it a financial impact? At what point is there going to be an impact?
We will bring that answer back to the board at the, the next meeting. I want to make sure that we have the right number to say that at this point with the plans that we have were within the current budget.
Thank you. The third question. One, two, three, the fourth question. I have actually five. So Mr. Phillips, I'm going to ask one more additional question. Ms. Martin, who is the tech person support for Vista at our, at our schools? We have a tech person that the students, if their tablet breaks, they can go to, if they need help with the cord, they can go to. Does Vista have a tech person that students can contact?
Currently at this time, I'm not aware of a tech lead. I do know that she has a teacher leader who has been supporting with a lot of this work. And she has in many ways said that this person has become her right hand. And so I know that she has a teacher on special assignment who's been supporting with this work. So I would assume currently that that's her tech lead. I will get that information for you, but that is the person who has been helping her with enrolling students, making sure students have Chromebooks. And then also her office staff member, Roxanna.
Thank you. And my final question, you talked about the 18 students have been, that have been moved to Vista campus. Those are just, those 18 students have to be between the grades seven and 12, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Christian, all right, if you have four questions on the item. Now, Mr. Christian, if you ask a question and they don't know the answer, don't sneak a fifth question then, before question.
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. I have three questions. Ms. Martin, thank you for the presentation. You mentioned in the position, there are 248 students enrolled in the Virtual Academy and there are 267 students in the waitlist, which is a total possibly of 515. Why are we potentially capping the school at 350, which would limit? Anyways, why, why would we cap at 350 instead of 515?
So there's a couple of reasons and part, I mean, there's, there's two, there's two sort of responses to this. One is that, one, we don't currently have the staffing to keep going up in number. So if you just keep the waitlist open and you keep enrolling students and you're also, in some ways, we're not honoring, honoring the integrity of the school because then the enrollment is constantly fluid and you're constantly adding more students to classrooms, which is not normally typical for school. You might get one or two students, but the waitlist has been growing 50, 60 at a time. So that means the teachers' classes would constantly be changing. And we'd also be continually hiring all school year for teachers where we currently have a teacher shortage. So there's one, the integrity of the program. The principal has asked that there's also a cap because it doesn't allow them to really solidify the master's schedules to make sure they have enough electives for students to ensure that the teachers have built these relationships with students. And so the enrollment would constantly be changing. And so there's also an issue because the Virtual Academy was originally not designed to be what it is currently designed to be. It was designed to only have 75 students. That was the original plan in which before I was here, which was the original plan. There were only 75 students and that the enrollment was really for students who really wanted this opportunity to be enrolled in a virtual academy because they could work independently. And then what obviously our independent study bill passing and because of Delta COVID, the variant. It, I think there's a concern with the school becoming a COVID school, so to speak, without necessarily parents being invested. And so then you have a revolving door of students leaving, coming and going from the academy. So there's a desire to want to cap so that teachers feel like there is stability and the classroom is not a revolving door of students in and out of the program. So that's part of the challenge. And the major reason is we have a teacher shortage.
Thank you. So follow-up question. How many applicants did we have for the Virtual Academy in the last couple of months?
So I do know, I want to say there were, and I can ask Marcy to chime in on this, but I want to say for the Virtual Academy, the online application or job description that was submitted, I believe there were somewhere between 21 applications, but I could be incorrect. Do you want to chime in, Marcy?
All right, sorry. So we actually got a large number of applications in terms of remote or virtual. But paring it down to those that were qualified and able to do that. I, I can update that we did extend offers to about seven additional teachers in the last couple of days. And so we are onboarding more, but it depends on the, you know, the right credential and being qualified to do it.
Thank you. So why are we not hiring more teachers in order to increase the enrollment at the virtual school as quickly as possible?
I think we are hiring as many as we can get. But again, even though we may get a lot of applications, it doesn't mean they're qualified. So again, just first, we need to meet the need that we have now and then we can continue, you know, after that if, if possible.
Thank you. And my last question. Ms. Martin, what is the curriculum being used at the Virtual Academy?
They have all of the same curriculum that our students have in all of our schools. So we have MyMath, they are using Balanced Literacy. We've also started adding many of the online platforms such as Seesaw, Google Classroom. So currently they're using a lot of Google Classroom, Balanced Literacy, Readers and Writers Workshop. They have all the curriculum and textbooks that our high school students have. And I recently just sent out our curriculum and instruction director to make sure that students actually have the materials. But there was definitely a process. But there was definitely a process in which making sure that we have the correct number of textbooks for the demand of students that were in the Virtual Academy.
Okay, thank you both. Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Ruffler?
Thank you. When you get the demographic breakdown for the school, would you be able to put it in the Friday memo so all trustees can see it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Once again, I think I've asked this before, but I'm still not clear. What is the difference between Vista High School and the Virtual Academy?
So the Vista Virtual Academy has to have live instruction based on your grade level. You have to have live instruction. With independent study, it is more of a traditional model of you just are assigned your work, you can come in and meet with the teacher in person if you so choose. But it is not a requirement. Whereas live instruction is required for students to have the opportunity to go into one-on-one sessions, small group instruction. You have to have live instruction. And the live instruction does not have to be provided by, you have to have a credential teacher of record for those students, but the live instruction does not have to be provided by a credential teacher. It could actually be a PE class, or well, not a PE class, it could be an art class, it could be yoga, it could be mindfulness, it could be social emotional learning. But you have to offer live interaction. And so that's the real clear distinction between that and the traditional independent study. But essentially, independent study and virtual are now the same thing. It's just based on the grade level. So if you are K through third, you have to have a certain amount of live, live interaction. And as you go up in the grades, it tapers off into saying that you actually don't have to have the live interaction.
Okay, thank you. It, it appears, we had two callers tonight. We have some growing pains and some startup pains. What's the process and the timeline for troubleshooting issues?
I mean, part of that is we did close the Google form because what was happening is that parents were filling out the Google form and sitting on the waitlist, not knowing if they would actually be enrolled. So what we did was take all those families that were on the waitlist. And Ms. McCormick has hailed one being tomorrow sessions with families to identify if independent study, the Virtual Academy is the appropriate choice for them. As you can see from the numbers I gave you, some parents have decided from that orientation that this is not the appropriate choice for them and decided to send their students back to their home school. So all of those students are now having the opportunity to go to orientation. However, they are not spots for all of those students unless we expand beyond what we are asking for in terms of a cap. And I think that's the discussion that we need to have further. Because there is, I think, some differing opinions around the integrity of the Virtual Academy and it not having a revolving door. And so I think we need to continue to have this conversation. And currently now, the Google form lets parents know we received your interest, but you should stay enrolled in your home school and you are not technically already enrolled or enrolled in the Virtual Academy. So currently, right now, that has already been done. And then an email went out to all the families who are on the waitlist to come to the orientation. Those are the two modifications that have happened.
Okay, and then finally, when talking about the waitlist, how are families prioritized? Is it literally just off the waitlist? You're number two, you're number three?
Exactly.
Okay.
There is no, it is strictly from the waitlist. So if you are number two hundred and ten, and you got in, you got in. So it's literally just going number by number.
Okay, thank.
Thank you, ma'am.
Welcome.
Mr. Trahill?
Thank you. I do have a few questions. We've, I think I have four. My, yeah, three or four. I'll start. First one I have is for credits. Will the Virtual Academy students receive their graduation credits? Just like any other high school or, sorry, for this district?
Yes.
Okay. And also adding on to that, will they receive not just graduation credits recognized by WCCUSD, but also recognized by the California State University System and UC System?
Yes.
Okay. What exactly is the process of getting students off the waitlist into the Virtual Academy?
Currently, right now, it's going in order. So all the students who are on the waitlist currently have been asked to attend an orientation. From that orientation, there are many families who will decide that this is not the right option for them and will stay enrolled in their home school. Based on our numbers, we have two hundred and forty-eight students enrolled currently only wanting to go up to three hundred and fifty. So those spots would be available to any of those families who are on the waitlist, but in the order that they are on the waitlist.
Okay, thank you. And I have one last question. How many positions for the Virtual Academy have been posted in terms of like staff? Maybe it might be a question for Ms. Williams.
Ms. Williams?
So it was a general posting, so we just posted for as many applicants as would apply, and then we reviewed them for their qualifications, first looking at California due to the credential requirements and then out from there. So it's a large posting. That makes sense?
Yeah, makes sense. Thank you.
Next presentation.
Good evening. This is the business. So I'm going to start by talking about enrollment and ADA. For the last two years, the district has been held harmless by the state of California. What that means is back in March of twenty twenty, we submitted what's called our P two attendance. And that attendance and enrollment was twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-four students with a ninety-three point eight-three percent ADA. For the board and the public, it should be remembered that we don't get paid as a district for how many students are enrolled. We only get paid for the percentage of students that attend. So what that means is you take that twenty-eight thousand, two forty-four and you times by ninety-three percent. Our actual revenue is just over twenty-six thousand students. We received that revenue. The state law is that you get paid on the hire of the current year or the previous year. So the state paid us last year based on the twenty nineteen. They then provided a hold harmless for this current school year. So we're being paid again at the twenty-eight thousand, two forty-four. As we sit on day thirteen and we're checking it every day, our current enrollment this school year, and this matters not for today, but this matters for next school year, is twenty-six thousand, two thirty-three. But again, we don't get paid on enrollment. We'll get paid on ADA. And our daily attendance is just under ninety percent, eighty-nine point eight-eight percent. The net result would be if nothing changes at the state level, we would be just about three thousand students ADA below where we were pre-pandemic. More students are enrolled, they're coming to school, but not every day. This is not a West Contra Costa only issue. Every school district that I have talked to is having the same issue. In Contra Costa County, San Ramon has the same three thousand student difference. There were thirty-two thousand, they're now twenty-nine thousand. Mount Diablo, same exact issue, almost twenty-eight hundred students down. And the rate of attendance has changed where ours has dropped from ninety-three point eight to eighty-nine. If you go to San Ramon, they were ninety-seven percent, they're now ninety-three. So if you call San Francisco across the bay, they're having the same issue. So we're beginning the conversations and getting a coalition of districts to present this information that the way the state is planning to fund is going to create a significant challenge for school districts as we move forward to next year. This is something not to address today, but to have everyone aware that we're going to continue to, if you show any symptoms, stay home, please, please be safe. Work through the independent study criteria. But we do need to maintain our enrollment and find each and every student. We'll be talking more about that in coming weeks. All the different efforts that we're doing to attract students. The second piece, though, that is important, last year, we did a concerted effort up through December, if you may remember, to get the multi-purpose income form completed. We still are required by the state to fill out all of the compliance documents. This is another one of those that's included. So we'll be reaching out to those families that have not collected it. Because as everyone's aware, the state is allowing all students to receive breakfast and lunch every day. So there is not the same incentive to get those applications filled out. We are targeting those that have not completed them and will be contacting them as we go forward. There. So this is an area that we need the legislature to make a correction. We do not have the control to fix this. And so we're going to need to have our voices heard. I can tell you from the role that I serve this district, I'm going to do everything I can to get this story told. I'm pushing out every avenue, but we definitely need to focus on advocacy because this is going to be an issue for twenty-two, twenty-three. Next slide, please. As it pertains to budget, that is still our focus and the prime focus of the business office. At the next board meeting, which will actually be on September twenty-second, not the fifteenth, I apologize for that, we will be bringing the unaudited actuals. So that's where we closed the books on last year. There have been a lot of changes since we closed last year. Not everything is in the right category within the current budget. So we're going to immediately upon closing the books, basically do a redo and start over with our budget to get a true representation of what is being paid for where. And the goal is to have that information readily available. So when the equity review is completed, that the superintendent is currently going through, we're going to have all the current budgetary facts sitting right there so that as the priorities come out of that review, we'll be able to immediately begin looking at where are the dollars at today? And what shifts should we make in budget development? With that review, we'll begin the process for the twenty-two, twenty-three budgeting cycle. So while we're doing our advocacy to address the revenue issue, we're also going to be focusing on our expenditure side, how we spend our money and allow for decisions to be made in a much more timely basis. Our goal is to really do all of that work beginning in November, approximately when the equity review is released through the month of February, to then bring recommendations for where we have the need for strategic abandonment or shifting of resources to align to the priorities of the board and what the equity review played out. In addition, the board approved some additional support tonight. We're going to be working behind the scenes to design much better dashboards and transparent access to our financial information so that all stakeholders can see how much is being spent where and be able to allow the board to make better decisions. So we're working on the advocacy side, but we're also working behind the scenes. And we recognize that the current structure of the budget is not representative of how the organization looks today. And so we're going to fix that as soon as we close the books on last year in preparation to have everything back organized for first interim and that equity review. And that's the business services update tonight.
Thank you very much. Trustee Smith falls four questions on what was presented.
Dr. Wold, if students are quarantined, do they count for ADA or no?
So any student that is quarantined will need to complete an independent study agreement. The state has done some changes in the legislation to give us time to get that completed after the fact, and we'll be working with all students to get one of those agreements done. It's slightly different if you're a special education student than if you're a regular, but we'll be providing information into all of our stakeholders on how to do that.
Has the district contacted the missing students?
The schools have begun the process of any student that was expected to enroll. They have to go through a process of identifying where they transferred to, what has occurred to them, and we continue to do this. This is not just a, our district issue across the state. Literally, every district I've talked to is still in the identification process. Um, the only district that I'm aware of so far in Contra Costa that grew is Brentwood, which is run by fifty-two students. Everyone else is down and in that process of investigating.
In this district, what are the plans to recapture these students if we're losing ten, twelve, thirteen percent of our students? What are the plans in this district to recapture students?
So there's several areas and I'll let others in other presentations bring forward all of the different academic and programmatic ways to do it. Right now, we have a dedicated team with our SCOWs, Marin Torrio, and that team is currently trying to identify any and all that are still present and for whatever reason have not enrolled. And then a lot of the work is about how you do programs and how you make things address those students that, for whatever reason or not, still here.
The students that are in virtual school or on the waitlist for virtual school, are they still enrolled or not enrolled in their current school? And how does that impact? How does that impact our ADA? Or how does that impact where students are missing or not missing? Has there been a check between those two? Are students in limbo?
So if they're on the waitlist and they're not attending their current home school, then indeed that would be an issue as it pertains to ADA.
And do we know how many students fall in that category?
So this is part of the work that I have Marin doing, was actually pulling all the data of students who were in the Virtual Academy on the waitlist to then identify which students had actually disenrolled from the, unenrolled from their school. And I do have that data, so I'll pull it back up in just a second, but that was part of the reason for each call. So there was a call from Marin to every single family saying there is this orientation and reaching out to each school to double check to see if those students had actually unenrolled and to get them back into their home school. And he's able to been, he's able, he's been able to do that with many families and many families from our discussion did not actually unenroll from their school. They just put their name on the waitlist and stayed enrolled. But what I will do is actually pull that data up and send that to you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, for that. I'm sorry, is there feedback? Can you hear me?
Yes, trustee. Is that me? Who is that?
I can't hear you guys, there's feedback.
Uh, trustee Smith.
That's okay, Mr. Phillips. I know what you're gonna say. You can move on.
Thank you, trustee Smith falls. Mr. Christian, four?
Yeah, thank you. The question I have is going to the, the enrollment. What was our enrollment before we got into the pandemic?
Our enrollment in February of twenty twenty was twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-four students.
Where are we now?
On day thirteen, which was Thursday of last week, we were twenty-six thousand, two thirty-three. So a drop of two thousand.
So are we really dropping, I mean, losing a lot of students? And is that alarming, right? Is that a? And is that alarming or right? Is that alarming?
Losing even one student is always an alarm from the financial aspect, but also from the academic aspect. This is a trend that ever, and when I say every school district. I've talked to most of the large urban districts and everyone is showing the same trend. There is a percentage of students that have not returned to schools this year since the pandemic. And it's not just in California. We're actually having conversations with other states to see where did they go? So this is more of a global issue that is another area of advocacy and education and communication. That the entire system is going to have to work on. But it is a concern, most definitely, that level of drop.
This other piece that is, you know, is the community outreach of this. Because it's a lot of rebuilding process has to be done. And so is that in the minds of community outreach?
So I'm going to refer back to Ms. Martin. That's part of the work that is happening there. And I don't know if she wants to add to that.
Um, part of the community outreach has been to support scouts with reaching out to families who have not returned. We also sent out a letter to office managers, secretaries, basically to start calling their families and identifying. Whether they have left the district, gone to another school. And I actually have a spreadsheet of that as well, which I can bring forward to the board. Um, this is something I also have Marin working on with me to identify where families have gone. Um, and we were also, Ms. Logan and I trying to figure out how to actually document that into Power School. So that we're able to see it as a system. Um, and so I can bring that back to the boards. But there has already been an effort to identify where every single student went and why. Um, from some of the data I've seen, I did see that some students have left the district, left the area and have gone to charter schools. So I've seen that disaggregated by student. So I can get that for you as well, too.
And then the last piece of that is like the demographics in that, you know, what is a demographics in the midst of that?
So the demographics in the students who have left the district? Okay, I can get that, too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I only have one question. Dr. Wood, thank you for your presentation. Um, so I have personally spoken to family, to some families that are not attending school at the moment. Because they are in the waitlist for the virtual school. If we were to cap the virtual academy, how will we ensure those families that will not send their kids to in-person learning? I mean, get preference to be enrolled in the virtual academy? So we don't lose more kids and families?
Um, I think that's something we're going to have to look much deeper at. What the concerns are. I cannot give you a definitive answer how we get that information and know that answer. But that is an area that we have to look at deeper. Because again, our role is to get everybody enrolled into school, being educated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Sorry, Mrs. Reckler.
Thank you. So what is the financial cost of 3,000 students disappearing?
So for our district, if these numbers were to stay, that could be a $30 million price tag. I can tell you that we're starting to look at that in Contra Costa County. When you take the three biggest districts, San Ramon, Mount Diablo and West Contra Costa. We are talking about $100 million in this county alone as of this week.
Has the California Department of Education Census Bureau, I mean, I don't know where to dig for this. Have they given any guidance, any ideas? Any insights? Or are they leaving districts out there to figure it out themselves?
I can tell you that we've had some discussions with some of the experts. And this was a surprise to many in the field. They did not understand the magnitude that public schools are facing right now. Which is why an advocacy campaign is going to be necessary. And an education to our legislators is going to be necessary. We plan to reach out to those that represent us and begin the conversations immediately. So we're going to do everything we possibly can to get the story told. And get people to pay attention to the concerns.
Uh, what would be the cost of a lobbyist? We were in the 3,000 a month range. Is that still inaccurate?
That is correct.
Have you guys looked at charters, privates and online schools for enrollment? And are they full?
So we did look at our charter schools. And they were already basically normalized. So their growth was their normal grade levels that are coming in. They cannot go and add additional students without a material revision to their charters and none were brought forward. So while they are growing, that's because the charter schools in our boundaries were adding grade levels. And we had already built in that new kindergarten class going to that charter. So it's not a, they're leaving us and going to a charter school. That was already built in and the charter schools have their waitlist. What we don't have full access is if there's a whole bunch of new private schools. That are playing in and I don't have that answer. But at this point, it's not that the charters all of a sudden picked up 2,000 kids. They can't.
And privates, have you guys checked in private enrollment?
We're, we're beginning to look at private school enrollment. I don't have a definitive answer. That is the amount and it would be hard pressed for them to pick up that many students.
And online charter schools, do you have access to that data?
Online charter schools, there's still the state moratorium on new ones. So they haven't been able to grab new students. And again, they have to have a relationship within each district or county.
Trustee Reckler, we're going to go to the next person. Excellent questions, though.
I'd love another round. You'd entertain that.
Mr. Trahill?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Can we bring up the next presentation?
Good evening. So we're, tonight, we're going to discuss where we are with recruitment and hiring, both short term and long term. Um, we still have a large number of vacancies, around 40. Plus, we have some leave of absences long term. We've done a lot of work the last two weeks to try to fill those vacancies, both recruiting. Some people are definitely in process. That process takes a little bit longer. When you're looking at whether they qualify for credential. But we've reassigned a lot of our central office staff to some of these positions and prep teachers to make sure that they have a teacher in there. We have done most of that in the elementary. Um, I would say that they are almost completely filled. We're still working on the prep teachers. Our secondary, I need to get closer, our secondary um, single subject areas are still, oh, I didn't also turn my video on. Sorry, too many buttons to push. Um, our secondary are still have vacancies. So our science, our math, English, counseling, CTE, and so we're still continuing to do that work. So next slide, please. So as I mentioned, this is what we're doing to cover those, the central office staff, the reassigning of prep teachers to current openings. That's been going on since last Thursday. We're continuing to reach out to our retirees. They can work without waiting the six-month period of time. And many have expressed interest, but said that it might take a couple of weeks because they had made plans. Knowing that, thinking that they weren't going to be able to work. So as we get into October, we'll have more of them on board. We are continuing to hire substitute teachers. Uh, obviously with the updated rates, that's helping as well as getting the word out there. And as somebody applies for them, we're getting them processed and assigned. We continue to have the incentive and retention bonuses for our new hired teachers. We're posting on social media and EdJoin. And again, we are finding teachers. It's just not at the rate that we need to. Um, we will continue to, you know, job fairs as they come up and get ready for next year. Next slide, please. So when we think about solutions, we have to think about both the short term, which is how to fill the vacancies now, but really also long term. And during the past two years, it has become very evident that the HR department lacks the staff and the resources to be able to fully support our sites and ongoing recruitment. In a subsequent slide, we're going to talk about the classified openings. But we are looking at trying to hire 300 to 400 people in a very short window of time. That means onboarding, recruiting and all of, all the other HR functions that need to happen. We also had our own vacancies and absences that reduced services. So we are looking at, we are undertaking a restructuring process to be able to support. And really focus on our talent development and recruitment. We need to be able to do mass hiring every year. Uh, we need to add positions, partner with local universities with a full-time residency program coordinator. That will help us support, grow our own teachers and a pipeline of new teachers to come on board. We absolutely must begin the recruitment process earlier. In order to make sure that we are capturing and finding these teachers and our classified staff in the window of time that they're available. Right now, it's not happening until May and June. It needs to happen in February, March and April. We also need to implement technology to track the vacancies, the candidates and the onboarding process. Managing 400, 300 or 400 people without that technology is impossible. And better coordination with sites. Next slide, please. So classified vacancies, I'm representing, I'm looking at the 2018, 19 school year. Just to get a reference of how many classified postings we did, 443. 246 of those were special ed. I used 2018, 19 because 1920, we were in the middle of a budget. And then we had 1920, 2021, which is the COVID. Again, just understaffed with the amount of postings and recruitment required and substitutes. I'm not even representing substitutes there. Just also to make note is every resignation, when we do classify, does not equal an external hire that's immediately replaced. Um, our postings are priority to transfers and internal promotions. So that means that it might move that vacancy to a different department. Um, and not an immediate replacement. This creates and can create a backlog of vacancies. Many times applicants must often be hired as a substitute in order to have a better chance of being hired into permanent positions. Again, not always making sure that we get applicants immediately on board. Next slide, please. This is where we're at right now with our vacancies and classified. 221. We already had a large number of, of special ed vacancies. With contract negotiations, we added 50, more than 50 extra FTEs in those positions. And then at resignations from May, added another 59 throughout all of our positions. We are working diligently, but we need help. And we need, we need help both in personnel and in resources. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Trustee Smith falls.
Ms. Williams, I have a couple of questions for you. It's more than four. Uh, the first one is who's interviewing the teachers? Principals are incredibly busy. Who's interviewing the teachers right now?
So we have internal staff that can do that, but we are coordinating with the, um, the principals. If they want to interview, they can do that or we're doing it internally.
The second question, what's the legal aspect of not having the special ed positions filled?
Uh, it's a big impact, especially the one-on-ones. We have to contract out many of those positions.
Thank you. The third question, how many central office staff have not been assigned to classrooms?
Um, I think most of them have been in terms of coordinators that we identified. I don't have an exact number.
Okay, I have three more questions. The fourth question, how many custodians and CSOs have been hired?
So we have, I don't know, seven or eight postings open. And again, as I mentioned, that means that they're going through the internal process. Um, someone may be promoted up or transfer. And then we have, I don't know, nine, 10 custodian subs that have either been hired or onboarded in the last couple of weeks. And can you do that every day?
Thank you so much. The last two questions, do you keep a daily count of how many?
Trustees, my phones, we're going to go to the next person.
Uh, President Phillips, I'm going to request to ask these last two questions because they're very important. And we are, it looks like we're way ahead of time schedule. So if you would just allow me to ask these last two questions, um, how many?
Trustees, my phones, we're going to go to the next person. Everybody needs to have equal time and we need to be able to move through. Um, and there's been space created tonight for people to ask more questions than usual. The way we're breaking it out. So we're going to go to the next person. Mr. Christian, do you have questions or questions on this item?
Yes, I just have a few questions. Thank you. The, the, the one would be for, um, for the CSS. Um, are, are the positions being filled at the different school sites that are open?
So yes, they're in the interview process. So we started with the supervisor positions. And again, some of them have had to be reposted. But while we're waiting, we also posted as a substitute, the CSS ones. And they're being processed as well, interviewed and processed. Many times people don't always include all the documents needed. So we call and contact everyone and then do interviews and then get people processed as well as fingerprinting. So it's not, you know, a one-day, um, process.
Okay. And that'll be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, I just want to start saying thank you to you and your staff for all the work you're doing. Um, do you feel like our sub-rate? Sorry, do you feel like our sub-rate is competitive with other large urban districts like Oakland or San Francisco? If so, great. If not, what would it take for us to be able to take their subs?
So you're talking certificated?
Large urbans like Oakland and San Francisco or Santa Rosa, Mount Diablo, comparable districts to, to our size. Are we compared enough in our sub-rate that we approved a few months ago?
Oh, yes.
Uh, or do we need to revisit that to ensure that we can take all their subs as soon as possible?
So yes, I was just making sure you're talking about teacher subs. Um, yes, I, we did look at all the different rates that were out there, both short term and long term. I do think we're competitive. Uh, but I also think that we want, we need other things to draw people in. One of the things that we did include is having some teacher or substitute teacher training available for all of our subs. We need to get that word out, but I think. We need to get that word out, but I think as we have new substitutes that may not know, you know, how to be in the classroom or want some classroom management skills, we want to provide that. So that's more about getting the word out, but I do think that that's an added thing because sometimes it's not just the money, it's being supported.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, for that. Um, are we doing an early retirement notification incentive this year? So that your staff may start hiring early for, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year?
So we have not gotten to the point of whether we're going to bring that forward to the board. That would be part of our conversations as we move forward in the budget cycle to determine if there's resources for that and how it happened around the December timeframe.
Thank you. And my last question. Um, what are we doing, um, when it comes to marketing in order to recruit more subs?
I had it on. We did do a flyer and went through social media and we're working with our communications department. We also wanted to make it really easy to, um, when we link, when they link into the webpage, they can see everything they need, the resources we're giving them, the amount, um, the new rates, how to apply, that sort of thing. So we're going to continue to push it out on social media. We sent it to our principals for them to share. A lot of times they know people on the sites and so we're going to continue to do that.
Thank you. That's it.
Mrs. Ruckler?
So when there isn't a teacher, what is the communication vehicle between the HR office, the principal, and the families that lets them know what's happening, timing of, of getting permanent, a, a permanent placement?
So I mean, I think every situation is slightly different. Um, just, you know, we're always trying to keep up with them, but during the first few weeks of school, everyone's extremely busy, especially this year. And so just, you know, sometimes class, we're, we're in constant contact with them, emailing back and forth in terms of that. Um, I think that sometimes we may rush to say that they're going to be ready and on board. When in reality, we're looking at their credentials, we're waiting for them to fill out paperwork, we're looking, applying for their credential, we're doing their fingerprinting. So it may take a little longer than normal. But we are communicating with the principals at the site.
And is there potential to standardize the way that communication stream happens?
Um, ideally, I would like to have, you know, to see how much a software system, technology could use so that a principal could see where they were in the process and not have to rely on a spreadsheet or communicating with somebody directly in HR. So ideally, it would be, you could see where they were in the process and hiring manager, a principal. So that's what we're looking for in technology to use.
And then probably even though this is each HR influences instruction, what are the patchovers? What are the, um, you know, what do kids do when there isn't a permanent teacher? How do we deliver instruction in that gap?
Well, that's a conversation that we're, you know, continuing to have. Um, we have a meeting tomorrow to figure out how we can support our substitutes or whoever in the classroom to make sure that there is instruction going on.
Okay. Trustee Gonzalez, I asked all the rest of my questions when I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Trujillo?
Yeah, I do have three questions. Um, yeah, um, the first one I have is, will subs for classes with vacancies be like permanent in that class? At least until the vacancy is filled, because I know from my experience personally, often a sub will be there for maybe one or two days and then from there we'll get someone different, maybe a teacher during the prep period. And often that leads to that class not getting the right, um, I guess, curriculum and education. So is there something, yeah, will subs be in that class like permanently until the vacancy is filled?
So I wouldn't say permanently, but, but yes, we want to avoid the every couple of days and changing out. Which is why we assigned some of our central office staff and our prep teachers. Those hopefully will be there until we find a replacement, but definitely want to avoid the every couple of days changes.
Thank you. And, um, one more, uh, this question is more about, um, but it, would there be opportunities for, for students to maybe help out? Like, I know that some clubs at schools do environmental work to maybe clean up the environment. Would it be something for students to maybe do work on campuses, helping like custodial work that would either be for volunteer credit or something, since there is a, a big shortage on, um, custodial staff?
Uh, so I know there is student worker programs and we actually hired fifty-three student workers over the summer to work in food services. So I think that's something, you know, to explore how that works.
And are these student positions known or how can, already known like to, to most people, because I personally didn't know about, um, options? And is there a way to make them more available if there are positions open for students?
So I'm not sure what department it, there is a student worker that processes them. Like I said, this is the first year HR has, has processed so many. So it's something that I think we can both explore and figure out and then come back with more information.
Okay. Um, thank you. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Um, before we start the next presentation, I just want to say really quickly to the board, um, just a time check in. So, and I'm trying to do a better job of telling you what's in my mind, right? Because you can't read my mind. Um, but we need to head into, um, closing comments at ten. Um, because we head into it at ten, that gives us each approximately three and a half minutes to speak. Um, because there, well, there's not seven of us, there's six of us, but basically around ten is when we need to stop everything and start closing comments. So everybody can have, you know, a few minutes to actually talk. Um, which means that we have like an hour and a half to get everything else done. Um, which includes these presentations and then the action items that we have coming up. So please keep that in mind as you're asking your questions. So the next presentation.
Good evening. Next slide, please. So tonight I'd like to give an update on our water fountains, bottle fillers and filters. Um, so across the district, our water fountains are, remain off still. Today, we have installed two hundred and seven bottle fillers on our drinking fountains across the district. And I just want to thank our maintenance folks that have been working really hard to get that done. But we still have seven sites that remain without bottled water, our water dispensers. And these sites are much more complicated because it, either the way the fountains were constructed or the construction of the buildings themselves. Um, we've been working with the union as a partner and we're going to take these sites out to bid. Um, so we can expedite the installation on these particular sites while maintenance continues to work on the sites they've been on, uh, completed two hundred and seven. If we counted all the drink fountains across the district, we have closer to four hundred. What we're doing is making sure that every site though has bottle fillers onsite in ample number. I don't think we'll ever get to a hundred percent of drinking fountains, but I don't think we need to be there either. We're making sure that the students have access to water and sites that do not have fillers. We're bringing bottled water into those sites. As well as we're looking at options to install chill water within the cafeterias. Uh, we're trying to evaluate our facilities right now where we can actually retrofit the cafeterias where we have water and waste, where we can bring chill water to those sites. That's a little bit further down the road, but that is one of our next steps. And just a reminder, the nutrition services is providing water at the middle of high schools, both in the breakfast and the, and the lunch. And then just an update on filters. Um, while we have installed HEPA filters and we've talked about MERV thirteen filters in our forced air ventilation systems, there's still a lot of questions and requests for HEPA filters to be installed in classrooms. We are evaluating those needs as, as those requests come in. And depending on, uh, the need of the classroom, the number of students, we are sending HEPA filters out. Um, at the current time, we're, we're running very low. We do have orders into our warehouse to bring more into inventory. Um, we're also looking at some different models that would be much easier to dispense out at the site currently in a classroom. Uh, the units we're installing have to mount it on the wall. Uh, so it takes manpower to do that work. Um, so we're trying to look at options where we can bring in, uh, basically a suitcase sized device that would actually plug in, plug and play in the room that could be easily assembled and put in. And again, just some of the challenges we've had is really just the, um, the volume of numbers put out there, our staffing needs. Um, we too have challenges with, with staffing, uh, vacancies and or just absenteeism, folks out on COVID. And just the priorities across the district, trying to make sure that the HVAC systems are just up and running. These same people that maintain our daily systems are the ones installing these filters. So, um, it is a, it is a struggle, but we're taking on the challenge and we're continuing to work through that. So, um, I will take questions on this tonight.
Mrs. Smith falls.
What are the seven sites that still need baller, bottle fillers?
So there are seven sites. Um, I don't have them all written down, but I will say it's Pinot Valley High School, Coromatsu, Fairmont, Hannah Ranch, Shannon. Those are the ones that I have off the top of my head and I can get you the complete list of the sites that are without.
At the high schools, how are you allocating how many butter, bottle filler stations each high school gets? Is there a formula that you're using? Does every high school get the same amount? Is it based on the spacing? How are you allocating? What's the formula for that?
It's really, we're trying to evaluate what's most accessible. So if, if there's a drinking fountain in the cafeteria, we're trying to get one there. If the building is a multi-level building, we're trying to get one on each floor. And every building is unique. Several of the schools only have exterior fountains. Some schools only have interior fountains. Um, so we are trying to spread them out across the campus um, as best we can to make sure that we kind of cover. The example would be for Pinot Valley High, they have three floors. I believe there's four fountains on each floor. We're trying to get two fountains on each floor and one at the, uh, outside the cafeteria building. Um, sites like Valley View only have exterior mounted drinking fountains and they only have two. And they're on pedestals, so those pedestals have to be removed and replaced to actually equip those units with, uh, bottle fillers. I believe that's the same way with Hannah Ranch. So every site is unique in its own, uh, layout and how many drinking fountains they have. It's kind of surprising when you look across the sites, some sites may only have two, three drinking fountains and other sites may have thirty drinking fountains. So I don't think there's a one size that fits all, but we're trying to make sure that we do equal distribu- distribution across the sites.
How many requests have you gotten over the past four weeks for standalone filters, HEPA filters? How many requests have you gotten? Approximate if, if you don't have the exact number.
I do not have an exact number. So we are working currently on a list that we received from special ed to provide HEPA filters to all the special needs classrooms across the district. Um, but I would say that the request is, uh, really slowed down. Um, I probably get two, three requests a day that come in though for filters.
And for standalone filters also?
Uh, actually the ones for small offices is tapered down as well as we've provided mostly filters, uh, in offices where we didn't provide those during the spring reopening where we didn't actually have um, meetings in those type of rooms. Um, but we have been supplying them out. And again, those numbers have really dwindled. Um, but we are looking at all requests that come in and we're trying to expedite the distribution.
And Mr. Freeze, my final question on this is, I asked for a list of isolation rooms, ensuring that they had the help of filters and all of that. You said you were going to get me that list. Am I able to get that list of the isolation rooms and what schools have them and where they're located?
Uh, I apologize for not getting that out to you, but I will follow up with that on that and make sure you get it by the end of the week.
Thank you.
Mr. Christian?
Yes, thank you. Uh, just a few questions. Um, my first one is, uh, how can staff request, uh, more, uh, PPE uh, for the custodians teachers and special education staff?
So the warehouse did an initial distribution of PPE to the school sites. Um, and I believe they were trying to cover what they thought would be a couple of months worth of PPE supplies. Uh, but the PPE supplies are no cost to the school sites. They are on the regular warehouse order form. Um, so all they have to do is much as they would submit a ware- warehouse order for any supply from the inventory, that's all they need to do and they would get the delivery, uh, timely.
Okay, thank you on that one. Um, the next one will be, um, um, why does it, we're actually pertaining to one of the schools, um, is Grant, and why don't Grant have a isolation room?
So looking at Grant, Grant is the school that's running at capacity for their space. Um, Miss Adari, um, has indicated that she does not have an adequate space to work with an isolation room. She's currently been using the office area while it's occupied with other staff. Um, we've made the commitment, we've actually ordered a, um, exterior tent to go out in her courtyard. It is a pop-up tent, but it is have three sides on it. It's fully enclosed. It's ten by twenty, so it has plenty of space for chairs inside to sit away. Students are waiting for pickup. And we are also looking at that site. There were two portables. We were recently doing, uh, a portable, um, upgrade project. Replacing siding, there are two portals that were deemed, um, not revoteable, repairable. So those, those portals were removed from her site. And we're currently working, to bring on an architect to design and submit for approval to replace those buildings on her campus.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, the last one is, uh, um, and I know the, the, the water stations are going in, uh, the same like some of the, if some of the students don't have like water bottles or are we trying to help in that ass, aspect or?
Well, we are doing, and I, I talked to a purchasing again today, we're, we're looking at, uh, five to six ounce disposable cups and being a distributor cups out to the school sites. So they do have, um, cups to use with the, with the water fillers. I do send those, that some sites have actually procured bottle fillers for their students as well. All right, thank you.
Mrs. Ruckler? Sorry.
No problem at all. I only have one question. Uh, Mr. Freeze, uh, thank you for all your work. Uh, what is the process for teachers or administrators to request a HEPA air filter, uh, if needed?
So currently the process really has been, I've been the point of contact and they've been emailing me directly for that. Um, and I think this, at this point in time is the easiest, the most expeditious, it doesn't get lost in the work order system. Uh, we do have a tracking sheet that I share with, um, my staff and everybody reviews that the sheet on a daily basis. Um, we have a system where our larger filters are installed by our main and staff, our smaller filters that are portable by nature that plug in, that are serviced through our operation staff. Um, and so as the units are available, we're picking them up and delivering them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Now, Mrs. Ruckler.
Thank you. What is your turnaround time from the warehouse? Do sites get orders weekly, monthly? What's the?
Um, so I don't manage the warehouse correctly, although I do work with their staff every day. And I believe those returnarounds are fairly quick when those orders, I know when I request items that need to go out, whether it's PPE, HEPA filters, whatever I need to send out or bottled water, they're, they're the next day turnaround. So they've made a priority for, uh, PPE and those other type of items.
And how does the maintenance log work if a teacher emails in that their HEPA filter is flashing red? Or how is there a prioritization or like how, how does that work?
Um, our maintenance staff and Mr. McDaniel, they review those work orders every morning. You know, we do request, what we found ourselves is circumventing the system some days because we respond to emails. Because we believe sometimes it's a higher priority and it circumvents the system that we're going through the work order system. But I believe his staff reviews those every day and they try to make, uh, their priorities based upon our needs, which are really sites that are fully down, sites that have, that have one or two rooms that are down as far as ventilation running. So those are, are high priority issues and that's how we kind of prioritize our, our work.
Would you consider buying KF ninety-four masks? There's been a large body of epidemiology research saying that a K of ninety-four is really the name of the game right now? I can send you a bunch of stuff.
If you could, I'm not familiar with. If you could, I'm not familiar with that. I mean, we do stock the K ninety-fives and the ninety-five and ninety-five mask in stock. They, and the school sites do have those masks available, although the what we've been distributing out for student use and staff are the surgical mask and cloth mask for students and they do come in variety of sizes. And our warehouse is aware of that. And so there's a size that's enough for elementaries and there are sizes that they send out for students in middle and high school.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to send you some real, real reports.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you, and that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Trugel.
Thank you. You have some questions. You mentioned that students are being given the water bottles as of now, I believe, in the sites that don't have the filters yet. Is that correct? Yes. Now, where is, I don't believe there's any protocol in place for students being able to drink water. I know from personal experience, you know, often coming to school that, you know, I come with my water bottle filled and often you don't have an opportunity to drink the water because of masks, of course. And throughout passing periods with a mask on, which, which is fine. But until lunch, you really don't have an opportunity to drink water. Teachers often don't want you taking your mask off in the class for a drink water. It just doesn't seem to be a proper protocol in place for students to actually drink water. So is that something that could be possibly worked on in the future?
I believe so. I think that's kind of a question that I'd refer to Mr. Booker, but as we look at our protocols, I believe that, you know, students should have opportunities to drink water. I mean, they go outside the exercise, they should have an opportunity to step out and have a drink of water.
Thank you. Yeah, those are all my questions.
Great question, sir. We're going to go on to the the main event. You ready? Let's go, Mr. Booker.
I will say that I'm, most of the times I am ready. So before, before I get started, I want to briefly say that I've always been under the belief in order to properly educate kids, you have to have a safer environment. And Dr. Hurst and his board has entrusted me with that responsibility for keeping these these sites, these schools, this district safe. Until this point, I have done a subpar job of making sure that we are responding appropriately to COVID. But with that said, I want to say that the last week and a half or so, I've really taken a critical look at what we're doing in terms of our protocols, our procedures, and what's going on with our testing as well as our contact tracing. So I want to say with this slide, what we did this week after looking at it carefully, we decided that when it was on a modified schedule because of the holiday, but after talking to the company that we were using, Predacon, we decided that this week we were going to strictly stick with antigen testing, which is rapid testing for all sites. So we stuck with the schedule that we had and made sure as best we could that they were doing antigen testing at each of these sites. We also continue with their response for symptomatic and response testing using their response team. And that also was antigen testing. But to this point, and as of this time and as of this date, I have seen that this their production, their service has been subpar. So with that being said, we are looking at a transition plan moving forward. Next slide, please. And with that transition plan, which will take effect Monday, the thirteenth, we are transitioning away from Predacon Friday at the end of business hours. And we are moving towards a company that we have used in the past that the board has approved. And we are moving forward with them for rapid testing for our whole entire district. We've also been in consultation with state and county officials who has offered us additional resources and assistance moving forward. They have also offered that there is resources in terms of money to pay for certain items, specifically nurses that can come out and help with this process. For the last week and a half, I have talked to LSA or ARC LSA laboratories with the intention of if Predacon did not fulfill their agreement, that we would pivot and move on. So every day for the last week and a half, I have been talking to LSA, working out the logistics on how this would work in our district, making sure that they had the proper personnel to fulfill what we need for this district. And making sure that they had the capacity at the lab that they own to get these tests, even though we're doing antigen, you still have to go through the laboratory for final approval to make sure that these tests are approved. To this point, they have satisfied me in terms of the, their response. And so I'm going to kind of go over what the response is going to be. As far as the registration process, it will be a one-time registration process and that process will be online. You will register online and put in all your information, personal information, as well as if you have any insurance information. That information will go into their database and they will also, if you don't have insurance, there is a space for that as well. After you complete your, your personal information, you will then make an appointment for the site that your child is going to be at. It's no specific time, it's just making an appointment so you can be tested for that day. The, as far as the logistics go, the site will, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, the site will be responsible for the logistics for that site. The online access will be available to district personnel, myself, the site leader, and of course, the parents. We will continue with the weekly testing cadence. In addition, we will also, and we've talked to the county about this on numerous occasions, but we will also have mobile vaccination clinics at the secondary school level. We already have one planned for El Cerrito High School. And I know that there's a number of principals that have reached out to me to have those vaccination clinics on their site. The test result notification, because we are using antigen testing, that will be within fifteen minutes. If the person that it tests isn't notified, the principal on that site or the site leader will be notified and have a list of, of the people that have tested for that day. They will also, in the event that there is a positive test, they will notify the staff, the student or parent, or the site leader. As far as cost goes, there is no cost out of pocket, co-pay, or anything like that to anybody being tested. If they don't have insurance, that is taken care of through federal monies. If they have insurance, the company will seek reimbursement from that insurance. But the insurance company, according to the Department of Management Healthcare, says that they not only can do this, but the insurance cannot charge the person that they are covering. And if they are doing that, on the slide, there's a one eight eight number that you can call. And they also have a website that is the California Department of Management Healthcare, where you can file a grievance if they are charging. So there is no cost to anybody that is being tested. Next slide, please. Our contact tracing procedures, like I said, the last time I was here, we made a shift. We were using our in-house nurses and those nurses were being overwhelmed with not having us at full capacity. So we reached out to the company that we are already working with, Maxim, and solicited their help with regard to personnel. So we got an additional thirteen LVNs to help us with our contact tracing process. We have codified that process in terms of having a lead nurse. We are working on having a co-lead nurse as well as a project manager. Those people are currently in place. And the lead manager is responsible for delegating those cases that we get on a daily basis to the contact tracers for investigation. We have updated our tracking system and we continue to streamline it so that it can mirror the county's contact tracing protocols. We've also streamlined our positive case response with regard to identification, notification, isolation, and eventually quarantine. We have also worked on our exposure response as well as our symptomatic response. With regard to our isolation spaces and our protocols, we have updated those and we are making sure that each site, if they don't have an isolation space, like Mr. Freeze said, we are getting them portable tents to make sure that they have that space available for them. As far as quarantine goes, we have looked at under CDPH guidance as well as Cal OSHA, as well as the County Health Department. We have looked at the actual definition for quarantine, for standard modify or shorten quarantine. And we are adhering to, to that standard for quarantine. I have been in repeated conversations with the county health, in particular, Dr. Ori, and the school's response team who investigates COVID at a county level. And they say we are in compliance with what we are doing with regard to contact tracing and our protocols and procedures. Next slide, please. Our report is, reporting procedure updates. We no longer use the COVID at WCC USD, USD dot net. We have revised the form. And that form is a Google form that is filled out by our employees, are not employees, but our supervisors or site leaders to report a COVID case on their site. The site leader is responsible for that notification. And we ask that when they get either confirmation of a positive case or they have an exposure, or they have someone that is symptomatic, that they report that to the Google form. As far as staff notifications go, we are trying to make those within a twenty-four hour period. As soon as we get the information, specifically positive cases, making sure that our employees as well as the students or the people that are most affected are notified. We also have revised our notification process with regard to our union partners. And we are making sure that our project manager, once we get those cases, are notifying our union partners. And then we have been doing this for some time, but we have made sure that our, our procedures for notifying the county are in line with what the county is requesting. So to this date, and as of my last speaking with the, the county's schools team and in particular their manager, they have agreed with or have said that we are reporting properly. Next slide, please. The next slide is just, it talks about close contact, what that actually means for vaccinated and unvaccinated people. Without going into detail on this slide, it's basically a flow chart of what you can do with vaccinated people and what you can do with unvaccinated people who are in close contact to a confirmed positive case. Next slide. So we've made a number of revisions to our dashboard. Ms. Logan is going to talk about that in a little bit of detail, but I think that with changing our revising our contact tracing process, revising the way that we get numbers that our dashboard is more accurate than what it has been in the past. So without further ado, Ms. Logan.
Thank you. Yes, good evening. So I first want to thank everyone who has provided feedback and commentary on the dashboard and suggestions for improvement. We've taken those in and we've made some shifts in the last week. The first being that we are not only reporting the weekly cases from the week prior, so that's still the main page of the dashboard. But we've added an additional page and I want to make sure everybody knows that there's a second tab. So on the screen in front of you, if you look at the bottom right, that's actually the top of the dashboard. So it's highlighted in blue there, daily totals by site. You'll be able to see on a daily basis from the first day of school, all of the onsite confirmed positive cases for students and staff. So we have committed to updating that on a daily basis and will continue to do so. So that is the place to look for cumulative totals and day-by-day totals. The main page is meant to be a reflection of the most recent week so that you can get a sense of what's going on in individual schools and then also across the district. The other piece I want to point out is that I've also received feedback about the importance of including testing data and how testing data would really provide context, right? The more test, the more testing we do, the more likely we will get more positives. So if we include testing data, that will give a sense of, is this a real spike in COVID or is this just more testing? So I want you all to know that we are committed to doing that and working on doing that. We are, as Mr. Booker said, in the process of shifting to a new testing company, so we need some time to work out the data pieces there, make sure it's accurate, make sure we have a system in place that we can sustain. But absolutely understand the importance of that context. And the last piece I wanted to mention is the purpose of the dashboard is for the public to have a transparent view into what's happening in our schools, right? It's not only the, the COVID transmission rates and the positivity rates, but also what are we doing with that data as a system? And so I, I want to highlight some of the work that we're doing with principals and with staff around those improvement measures, so mask wearing, hand washing, COVID safety lesson plan. So really taking that information, what is it telling us? Where do we need to really shore up? How we are practicing COVID safety in our schools so that we can keep students and staff safe? Thank you.
And with that, I will say that we are trying to keep making or working long hours to make sure that we are keeping this, this district safe. And so I open and I welcome questions at this time.
Mrs. Smith holds for questions on the presentation.
Mr. Booker, thank you so much for your first statement. Your humility is refreshing. It is something that should be emulated. I really appreciate it. The first question, how do you ensure COVID testing happens two times a week during a modified quarantine?
Well, how we were doing it previously is that, once I was notified of, of a case where we needed to make a modified quarantine class, I would send the company out there. I would send the company out there and then they would do rapid testing. And then I would make sure that they would come back sometime later within that week to do the additional testing. So that responsibility lies with me in terms of making sure that the company is getting to the places where they need to be.
Thank you for that. And the vaccination clinics that you're talking about, would they be during school hours? And if so, what's the impact on the campus?
We haven't worked out the logistics in terms of when and how long and where it's going to be. But once I have that information, I will make sure that I get it to you.
Thank you so much. The third question, would you recommend some PCR testing along with the antigen testing? Your recommendation?
Yes. So if we have an inconclusive or a test that is subject to scrutiny, then we will follow that up with antigen or I'm sorry, with a PCR test. So as far as the CDPH guidance goes, we are going to follow those up with PCR testing.
Thank you. And the final question, now that we're switching to a different testing company, are we going to reevaluate where we're testing students so we make sure that we have proper ventilation and the rooms are spread out and students are coming in maybe one at a time instead of a line of students because they're removing their masks when they're getting tested?
Yes, part of the process, and it's not just me. It's the whole district safety team is to make sure that sites are being in compliance with regard to not just the testing process, but as far as masking, some of our mitigation procedures or protocols that are in place. So if there is a site that is having a problem, we do have an anonymous number that people can call. But we try hard to make sure that these sites are complying with our standard with with testing.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Once again, I appreciate your first statement and your accountability. Thank you.
Christian?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And the first question would be, what about families that can't access the online forms?
That's it.
And the second one will be, the county says all vaccinated students should be tested weekly. How will we work to get more families to sign the permission slips to get tested?
So the the first part of your question, I'm sorry, can you repeat the first part again? I'm sorry.
What about families that don't have access online?
Yeah. So as far as the online goes, we talked about this today with the company. There is a process where if you don't have online access, you can go to the site, there is a QR code that they can use if you have a cellphone. If not, there is a paper process that you can use. But they highly recommend, because it's a tracking system for them if they do it online. So if you can't utilize the QR code, you do have a paper process that is available to you. And then as far as the second question goes, and can you just, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on.
Yeah, the county says all vaccinated students should be tested weekly. How will we work to get more families to sign permission slips to get tested?
So we are strongly encouraging all families to be tested. We are looking at some other options currently where it's more of not an option, but mandating. So we are looking at those options as well. As you know, once we get all the information, because we want to make an informed decision, we will make that decision at the proper time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. First of all, I just want to thank you for your work and honestly for your initiative to move away from Predacon and pivot, since obviously we were having issues. So thank you. If a kid goes home from school because they are showing symptoms, do they have to get a test and show they are COVID negative in order to return to school? And if so, who do they provide their negative test to? The teacher, site administrator, office staff? Who? Could you mention the procedure?
Yeah. So if a person is symptomatic and they have not tested positive, they would need a negative test to return to school when they are symptom-free. And that should go to the administrator. And it should show that they have a negative test as opposed to like, and I just use Kaiser as an example. They give you a note that says you are free to return back to school. We have to see that it's a negative test from whoever their health provider is.
Got it. Thank you for that. Could you clarify one thing for me? Is the CDPH guidelines for vaccinated individuals who go through our testing, if we use antigen testing, that they must be tested twice a week or once a week? For unvaccinated or vaccinated? I'm sorry, for unvaccinated?
In terms of what, modified quarantine?
Yes, sorry, maybe I'm not being super quick.
Okay, so the CDPH's guidance and the county health says that you have to be tested twice per week for the 10-day period. So it's twice per week for every week for the 10-day period in order to maintain your modified quarantine status. If at any time you test positive, you will go to what is called standard quarantine and that will be at home in an alternative learning environment.
Got it. Thank you very much. So what happens if a student has a parent, if a student has parent approval to get tested, but the parent doesn't make an appointment, do they still get tested?
So they would, they would need some type of approval. So what we did with the previous company is that if we got a verbal approval and then they were able to go online and fill out that registration process, they could take the test. So we're not going to deny anybody from being tested. So we will go through kind of the same process to make sure that everybody gets tested. And if somebody is being turned around, we need to know so we can make the adjustment so they can be tested.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. My last question is actually for Dr. Hurst. Dr. Hurst, I want to know what else you need from us. What do you need that you feel is missing?
I think the board has been very supportive thus far. I think we've been able to pivot just based on what we are receiving is data from Predacon. I don't think there's any more that the board can do at this point to support our actions. I think we know precisely what to do and our direction as well.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Mr. Booker. That's it. President folks.
Mrs. Reckler?
Thank you. Also, thank you for your work. I know this is bigger than you. It's a lot. I do appreciate it. Okay, a couple of questions. The first one is that you have stated that the insurance, there's no charge to families. However, we've had a number of people closely affiliated with the medical industry. They work in the ER, they're nurses, they, you know, that have called in. We had a call tonight that is disputing this discussion about payments. What do you make of that? How can you reconcile it?
So if I may, I would like to read what the verbiage actually says from the Department of Management Healthcare, if you allow me to do that. So it says, as provided by federal law, health plans and issuers may cover the cost of COVID-19 diagnostic tests without imposing any cost-sharing requirements, including deductibles, copayments, or coinsurance, prior authorization of other medical management when the purpose of the testing is for individualized diagnosis or treatment of COVID-19. So, and I won't go into, there's a little bit more, but basically they cannot charge the person that is being tested. And if they are being charged, so what may happen is, and I don't want to use a particular company, but some companies pay their insurer out, right? They'll send them the check. What the company is asking that they get reimbursed. And so there may be a time where they contact the insurer and it's because they've gotten the payment and that payment just needs to go to to the company that is providing the testing. So the money is coming from the insurance company and not from the actual insurer.
Okay, thank you. What is the communication plan? And to alert the district that we have a new testing company? And what do you need to be ready for a excellent rollout?
So Dr. Hurst had already mentioned that we have, I'm sorry, Dr. Hurst, did you want to answer this? Okay. He has solicited the help of a communications agency that will help with that communication. We plan on making some communications as early as tomorrow to make sure that people understand that there is going to be a new process. The link for the company will be on our website. As far as the communication goes, we will make sure that all families, as well as our staff, knows that we are moving forward with that testing and how it's going to roll out, the schedule for it rolling out. Because the schedule is a little bit different from what we did with the previous company. They looked at the last three weeks' data and based their schedule or how they give personnel to a site based on the numbers that we're getting over the last three weeks. So it will change a little bit and we want to make sure that we have enough personnel at sites. So for example, El Cerrito, testing seven, eight hundred people, we want to make sure that we have enough testers for that. Whereas at a smaller elementary school that is only testing twenty-five, thirty people, they may not need as much personnel. But that's why we also solicited the state in terms of looking for resources regarding personnel.
Okay. For the dashboard, are any health professionals familiar with reporting and interpreting and comparing data helping with the dashboard? To contextualize the numbers and put them in context? If that makes any sense?
Yes, I understand what you mean. Ish, yes. So I am working with a number of community members have reached out who are working in the health industry to provide input and feedback from both a public health perspective and an epidemiology perspective. So we're doing some of our own internal work to compare different districts' dashboards and what makes sense, listening to community feedback and then also getting input from public health.
Okay. And just to further on that just a second, is that these are our numbers? I don't know what they mean. Are they good, bad? You know, it's just, it's just data. So just to keep that in mind. Last question is, if a student tests for COVID off-campus, does this count in our numbers? I mean, if they happen to report it, does it count in our numbers? And does contact tracing begin with that?
So Mr. Booker can answer the second part of the question in terms of contact tracing. It does not count in our onsite numbers. So these are onsite, if a student is onsite two days during the infectious period, two days before testing, two days after, that is considered onsite and so we report it in our dashboard. However, any case that's reported to a principal that's then input into the Google form goes to our contact tracers. And Mr. Booker can talk about what that process looks like, if it's any different from an onsite case.
So it's a couple of things that we look at is last date onsite. And if it was during the infectious period, if it is and it was reported to us, then the contact tracing team would go through an investigation. That investigation may conclude that it did not affect the site, which ultimately would affect our numbers. But if it's reported to us, we're going to take an initial look at it. Because eventually that information is going to the county anyway, right? And so we've had a number of times or I have had where the county has called me on a case where a kid was not on campus at all and trying to get whatever information they can get.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Treheal?
Thank you. I have some questions. And also thank you, Mr. Booker, for your honesty with how you've been handling the situation. And thank you for handling it and making adjustments as you go on. My first question is, where can people access? Earlier, you mentioned a number. If there's an issue at the school with the way COVID testing is working, where can you access this number? You said it was an anonymous number. Yeah, where can you access it?
So the COVID tip line, and we're in the process of posting this throughout our sites, but the number is, and I'll give it to you, it's code five-one-zero-nine-six-five-four-four-four-three. And that number is for compliance issues. We ask that if somebody is giving information, that they give us the site, what the violation is. This is a totally anonymous hotline, so no fallback will come from the person that is reporting it.
Thank you. And also with that, where can you access the COVID-19 dashboard for the district?
So it is on the main website. If you go to WCCUSD.net, scroll about halfway down, look to the right. It's the third panel. It says COVID dashboard.
Thank you. One second. Is there a way that this could be on all school websites or is it on all school websites? Because right now I'm actually trying to find it and I yeah, I mean, it's, I just don't know if it's in the most accessible place for people to find. So.
Got it. I'll take that back. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I also have another question. How can we ensure that people are aware of the effectiveness of this new testing system with the new company? And that people aren't like scared to get tested? Because I know that was an issue before where people were not wanting to get tested at school and instead do their own testing, which is perfectly fine. But if they are given this opportunity to get tested at school, how can we ensure that people are aware that it's not something that may not be effective or they may not get their test results or just make people feel more comfortable with this new testing?
So part of my responsibility is to make sure that we are communicating this properly. So I can tell you, one of the adjustments that we made is that we are doing antigen testing right now. So you will get a almost immediate result as opposed to waiting for your results for two, three, or sometimes in some cases, not even getting them. So I want to assure for everybody that we have taken the steps in terms of not only what we're doing with the testing, but also with the personnel that we're going to need in order to test everybody on the day that they're supposed to be tested. So it's the responsibility of not only myself, but like Dr. Hurst said, we're going to make sure that our communication is proper and timely with regard to COVID.
Thank you. I have one last question. I asked Mr. Freeze this earlier. It's about protocols for students drinking water. And is there a protocol for students being able to drink water throughout the school day? And not have to be an issue with taking their masks off, perhaps maybe just stepping up into the hallway. And making it a way where it's not too disruptive to class.
Yeah, so we encourage. Our students to carry a water bottle. And if they need to do that, that. They have the ability to do that. So whether the teacher allows them to go out of class or making. Sure that they're not facing people or around people within the threshold of what we consider close contact. So there are many options that the sites have to make sure that young people are, are drinking.
And so it's more of a site-based issue rather than district-wide, is that correct? I'm sorry, would that be more of a site-based issue rather than district-wide?
So Mr. Treheal, I'm going to limit you to four, just like everybody else. You're up here, buddy, and you're doing a great job, but I'm going to limit you to the same as the rest of the trustees, okay?
Thank you.
No problem, but you're doing a great job. You really are.
So we're going to go on to the next item. Which is actually. B three. Which is recommendation from superintendent on public comment. For, we only have about forty minutes left before ten o'clock. So. I'm asking us to please try to limit this conversation to twenty minutes. If that's not possible, then I want to call up the other two items about hiring first because we have to do those. Because we need employees. So can we please try very hard to do this item in twenty minutes? Dr. Hurst?
Yes, sir. So the recommendation from the superintendent is as follows for public comment. That is divided up into three portions, public comment at the beginning of the meeting. The length of the public comment will be thirty minutes at the very beginning of the meeting. Each participant will have one point five minutes or a minute and thirty seconds and it will cover. Agendized and non-agendized items. Second part of public comment will be right after action items. The lift, the length of that public comment will be twenty minutes. Each participant has again one point five minutes. Covers action items only. And public comment after discussion items. Length of the public comment be twenty minutes. Each participant has one point five minutes or one minute and thirty seconds. It covers discussion items only. That is the recommendation from the superintendent and it comes from conversations from. Superintendent colleagues, but also from boards of trustees as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Smith Folds, any questions?
Dr. Hurst, will there be any public comment after presentations, like the presentation we just had? The superintendent's report, how it was broken down into four or five parts, would there be public comment after? A presentation like that?
I did not include public comment after superintendent presentation.
Or any district presentation?
No, ma'am, I did not. Just after action items, discussion items at the very beginning.
Okay, thank you.
Mr., Mr. Christian?
I have no questions.
Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you. I do want to ask some clarifying questions, Dr. Hurst. So the second part of your recommendation for discussion and action items, so. Twenty minutes after we have gone through all the discussion items, twenty minutes, then. After we've taken. Action, all the action items, we get another twenty minutes for public comment. Is that correct? Or am I missing misunderstanding your recommendation?
Sir, so after the action items or after action items, then there's opportunity. For twenty minutes total of public comment. So regardless of the number of action items. And it's not after each action items at the end. And then the, and the purpose was for public to really hear those. Items in the discussion and then at the end, there will be twenty minutes at the end. So twenty minutes total.
Okay, could you clarify a little bit more of your, of the intent? Like what's the purpose of having public comment after we've already taken action on the items? Like what, well, what would serve the purpose at that point?
I think my purpose was, I think from my understanding is that the public has. The right to just listen to the discussion, to the items that are presented. And then at the very end, they would have the opportunity to comment.
Okay, thank you. That was my last question.
Yeah.
Mrs. Reckler?
Thank you, yes. So if I could just clarify that again, so it would be after hearing. The presentation, but before the vote, is that correct?
Say that one more time, trustee Reckler.
I'm sorry, say that again. Okay, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's so hard to hear. Still getting used to it. So to, to clarify once again, it would be when you say after action items, so would all the presentations go up? Let's say we have three presentations that require action. All the presentations would be made and then we would have public comment and then we would vote, or is it? All the presentations would be made. We would vote and then listen to public comment, if that makes sense.
I understand. So yes, all of the presentations will be made. And then you would vote and have a public comment, twenty minutes.
After the vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank.
Mr. Treheal?
I didn't have any comments.
Remove that we adopt the superintendent's recommendation for public comment.
Can I make a motion?
I, I just did.
Can I make a secondary motion?
Can you please just pause for a moment and just for a moment? So I move that we adopt the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, so it was moved by Phillips. It was adopted, seconded by Christian. So on the discussion now, if you, hold on one second, Mr. Gonzalez. If you want to make a second motion, you can make one now.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that we change public comment to the following. Thirty minutes of public comment at the beginning of our meeting. Allowing a minute and a half per speaker. Speakers can speak on agenda items or agenda items or items not on the agenda. Then ten minutes of public comment after each staff presentation. And before board questions on discussion items and action items. Speakers would be allowed one minute of public comment per speaker.
President Phillips, I will second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded.
Would you be able to repeat it, please? I, I cannot hear her well, I'm sorry.
Trustee Reckler, I will repeat it. I would like to make a motion that we change public comment to the following. Thirty minutes of public comment at the beginning of our meeting. Allowing one point five minutes per speaker. Speakers can speak on agenda items or items not on the agenda. Then ten minutes of public comment after each staff presentation. And before board questions on discussion items and action items. Speakers will be allowed one minute of public comment per speaker.
So I'm just going to repeat the motion to make sure that I'm hearing it correctly and that the people in the room are hearing it with me correctly. So thirty minutes in the beginning. At one point five minutes per person. And that is on agenda and non-agenda items. Then on each item. Afterwards, is it each action item?
Then ten minutes of public comment after each staff presentation.
Okay, so every time a staff member gives a presentation, there will be ten minutes of public comment. On that item at one minute per person, is that correct?
And before board questions on discussion items and action items. And yes, speakers would be allowed one minute of public comment per speaker.
Okay, but. Just so, I don't get confused, I'll speak for myself. There is a presentation for every item. So if I just said that there's ten minutes. For every item that they give a presentation at one minute, that captures everything that you want on the second half, correct?
I think what I want to make sure that I keep it exactly, the wording exactly the same. So just. Your interpretation of it is, if this is your interpretation of it, that ten minutes of public comment after each staff presentation. And before board questions on discussion items and action items, then you're correct. And that each speaker would get one minute per public comment.
And this is before board questions?
Yes, sir. After each presentation and before board questions on discussion items and action items.
Okay, so the second part of it is ten minutes. Of public comment on every item where there's a staff presentation and that public comment. Will happen before board questions. Okay.
Or board questions on discussion and action items.
Right, every item where there's a presentation, right? Okay. Okay, so that's the motion that's on the floor. It's thirty minutes in the beginning at one point five minutes. Per person and then after that, on every. Item where staff gives a presentation, there's another ten minutes. And during that ten minutes, folks get one minute of public comment and that one minute comes before the boards. Ask its questions. So that's the motion that's currently on the floor. And the way this is going to work is that motion is the one we're taking up first. If that motion fails, then we take the motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation. So we're going to start with discussion. Trustee Smith Folds, can you begin? And this is on your motion, discussion.
Yes, I want to ensure that we're able to hear the public before we take action on something because that's the point of public comment. Is for us to be able to listen to what the community says before we take action on something. We are in this position to be the voice of the community. So we need to make sure that we're having a space. For them to communicate with us on the dais before we take action or it helps aid our discussion. Where we can then give accurate and positive direction to the superintendent. It does no good to listen after we already made the decision. Doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make sense to me. So I'm asking for colleagues, please to support this motion. So we will be able to listen to the community before we take any action. And we can make sure that we are bringing the voice of the community to the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Smith Folds. Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Christian, see, I got it now if I'm doing it the wrong way. Mr. Christian, your comments?
Can it be a question or is it asked, can I ask?
No, we're not doing questions. What we're doing right now is if you have a comment on the motion that trustee Smith Folds made.
Well. Well, I'm.
If you, if you don't, that's okay too. You don't have to say anything. I just, it's your turn, so.
Well, I do, I do want to say something, but I, I want that, you know. As the comparison between, you know, both of those motions with Dr. Hurst and, and trustee Smith Folds. You know, what's the diff, you know, what is the difference in?
Mr. Guns, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking into the microphone. Mr. Gonzalez, if you don't mind. When he gets to his comments, he'll speak to it and I think he may address what you're saying.
Thank you. Yes, sorry. So the difference here would be trustee Smith Folds' motion, which I seconded. Would allow public comment to happen after each. Presentation from staff before we take an action as a board. The superintendent's recommendation was that. We have public comment at the beginning and then after all the discussion items go. And then after all the action items go. Does that answer your question? Yeah, I mean, I'll make some more comments of why I'm supporting the second motion, which hopefully will clarify. I think that part of the issue, first of all, I just want to thank Dr. Hurst because I think that he's having to. Balance a lot of perspectives from the board on his recommendations. I understand why you made his recommendation. The reason why I don't agree with the recommendation is because. I also believe that what's the point of hearing public comment after we've taken an action on something? Or we've already discussed something. I think it's important that we hear the public. So then we're able to either answer their questions or their concerns or possibly. Hear from the public that we have not been able to hear in our own time. Like community groups that might be advocating for a certain decision. So to me, the second motion makes more sense. So that we're able to increase community involvement in what we're doing at every board meeting. So, so that's why I'd be, I'm going to be supporting trustee Smith Folds' motion tonight to make sure that we have public comment. After each item. And after the, the staff is able to present their, their item to the community. And we're able to hear from community after that. Thank you.
Mrs. Reckler?
I'd like to put another motion on the floor, please.
Yes, ma'am.
That. Public comment for all items, including the beginning, after action and discussion items. Is capped at one hour or twenty-five percent of the board's time and that this is a test for. Four meetings. And then we reevaluate.
Trustee Reckler, I'm just going to ask for some clarification. Your motion is that. Whatever system we choose, that it's no longer than an hour?
That's correct. Twenty-five percent of the board's time.
Okay. All right. I'm going to second that. That's the third motion on the floor. You can have three. There's no more at this time. So discussion on. That item. Or that motion, which was moved by Reckler and seconded by Phillips, trustee Smith Folds.
I don't think that we can cap it at an hour, trustee Reckler, just because we have taken. And unilaterally have taken standing reports away from the public. We have taken, we have lessened the time that the public gets to talk. Capping it at an hour to me doesn't seem like we're doing our due diligence. I think that there are going to be some topics that will not have. The amount of time, some topics that will, but I have to say that for me, the most important thing is hearing from the community. I would hate to put a number on it and then we don't extend because we don't extend. Or we put a number on it and we are just held to that number, even for four meetings. We have so much to do and we have so much, so many conversations that have to be had to completion. And we need to be able to hear from the community. So capping it at an hour right now. and we need to be able to hear from the community, so capping it at an hour right now, I think is not the right move to make. I think we need to be, we need to let it roll with the motion that, the second motion that was put on the floor. I appreciate what you were saying, but I just don't think we're at a position to cap anything, any conversation. Uh, we cannot continue to stifle the, the public. We stifling each other. So we can't continue to stifle the public, so I, no, thank you. I appreciate the motion, but I will not be voting for that.
Christian.
Only thing I'm gonna say is just try different ones. Uh, if, you know, I don't like stuff to be so complicated. I really don't. I really don't. But i- i- it don't matter if we just tried different ones. Go this one, go this one here, and this one here. I, I, look. I don't, uh, it's, it's too complicated.
Here, here, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Um, so I, I definitely understand why trustee Reckler is making this motion, because obviously, we're trying to do better, uh, um, with our community and staff to let them go to work the next day. The only thing why I will most likely vote no, trustee Reckler, I want you to know, is because if we have an hour maximum, and we have thirty minutes at the beginning full, and then we have more than three items, and there are community members that are waiting to speak on the fourth or fifth action item, then they won't be able to speak, because we've gone over that one hour. I really, obviously, hope that we don't have more than an hour, if, but if needed, I think that we should allow our community to be able to give their perspective on whichever item they want to speak. So that's the only reason why I will vote no, because I convinced that myself as I was speaking, because I do think that we run the danger that people will not be able to speak on an item, um, if we run out of the one hour. Thank you.
Trustee Reckler, do you want to speak to this?
I, um, board meetings to me need to be finite amounts of time. Four hours, that's it. I'm not voting to extend any more meetings from here on in. You know, we have to respect staff, we have to do better, and, uh, I'm staying within that timetable. Within that timetable, giving twenty-five percent of our time to the public feels like the right amount. If you look at this breakdown of what we've got going on here, twenty-five percent feels like a very generous amount of time to give the public and for the board to do its work. And it really depends on what the board wants to do and what the board wants to accomplish. And if the board, um, you know, uh, wants to slow down its work, um, you know, that's up for all of us, and it's democratically decided by the vote. I've also put a timetable on it to test it for a while, and we come back and revisit. And that's the reasoning for putting on the floor what I did. But I, I will not be voting to extend any meetings from this point forward. Thank you.
Mr. Trheo.
Um, I thank you, trustee Reckler, for, um, uh, making this motion. But, uh, I will not be, not be voting for it, because I feel as if the public shouldn't have time to comment on these items, on the action items and presentations, because it, it doesn't make sense for them to, to not. We need to listen to the public, and we need to listen to what they have to say, or else we're not doing our job as a board, representing the public, if we can't listen to what they have to say. And that'll be all. Thank you.
I'm gonna support trustee Reckler's motion. I'm gonna support it for a couple of reasons. Um, one is the math. There are four hours in a board meeting. That's it, four hours in a board meeting. One hour is currently what we allocate to public comment. Um, one hour, so that only leaves three hours left. Staff's presentations, um, and this was sort of a light meeting, but staff's presentations normally take um, an hour and a half to two hours, I'll say like an hour to two hours. And so I'm gonna say staff's presentations are two hours. That means that we have one hour left for everything else that has to be done. We have one hour left, uh, for the board to ask questions. We have one hour left for the board to make comments. We have one hour left to do the pledge of allegiance and the land acknowledgement. Every single solitary thing that we have to do that's left, we have to do it in one hour. Board, we know ourselves, we can't do all of our work in one hour. Um, and we have demonstrated that over and over and over. Now, if we give two hours, remember, there's only four hours in a meeting. If we give two hours to public comment, and we could very easily give two hours to public comment under this proposal that was made previously, and we take another two hours of staff presentations, that's four hours. That's the whole meeting, and the board has not said anything at all, not one thing. So I understand the idea of trying to be inclusive, but I want to remind folks um, that this is not a, 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 a meeting of the public. This is a meeting that is taking place in public, and the board has to have time to actually do its work. So I am going to vote for, uh, trustee Reckler's motion, um, and so let's vote. Um, the first person is trustee Smith Folds. Oh, there is one thing that I want to say really quickly before we go. Um, the bylaws, uh, because I, I think that there is a misunderstanding of what our bylaws are. Our bylaws give the board president the ability and the discretion to extend public comment, which, and you've seen me do that in different, uh, meetings where that's been necessary. So even though our bylaws say, because our bylaws have time limits in them as well, um, but we can't exten, and I can extend, and I've done that, and you've all seen me do that when there have been hot button issues. So voting for trustee Reckler's motion does not mean that if there is a hot button issue, and, you know, there's three hundred people that come in here, that, you know, we don't have the ability to extend public comment, because, you know, we do, because you've seen me do it. And that's not changing, we're not changing the bylaw that gives me discretion to do that. Um, so I just wanted to say that, because I think we were losing that, um, perspective. Um, so anyway, that said, uh, Smith Folds, can you please begin the roll call?
This is the vote on trustee Reckler's motion?
This is on trustee Reckler's motion.
Smith Folds, no.
Christian, on Reckler's motion?
I'm staying.
Gonzalez, hold on now.
Reckler, yes.
Trheo, no.
Phillips, yes. Okay, so the motion, uh, fails. All right, so now we're going to go to the second, uh, motion, which was um, trustee Smith Folds' motion, I'm gonna repeat it, it was thirty minutes of public comment in the beginning at one point five minutes uh, per person, and then after that, on every item where there is a presentation, an additional ten minutes of public comment at one minute per person, and that public comment is before, um, the board asks its question. So that's the motion that's on the floor. Um, do we need any, this, did we have, we had discussion on this already. So what I'm gonna ask is, if we can thirty seconds apiece, because it's nine fifty, um, and we really already spoke on this, but trustee Smith Folds?
I would ask colleagues to vote for this, and to keep it very, very simple. We cannot have it to be one person's discretion if we extend public comment or not. That is too much power in one person's hand. It's to the president's discretion if public comment is extended or not. We need to have a firm policy when the public knows when we are listening to them. A hundred percent of our time belongs to the public. We work for them. If we can't get our business done, have more meetings, have them shorter, have some long meetings and some short meetings. We need to do whatever we have to do to ensure that we're doing the work of the board. And the work of the board includes listening to the public. We are, uh, we are all about data and numbers up here. How many, how much time are we spending per board meeting, having you tell us what we doing wrong? Or having you correct wrong, folks? Ninety-three percent of the meeting? Twenty-eight percent of the meeting? Fifty-three percent of the meeting? We need to make sure that we are following protocol at all times. I am trying to ask the colleagues to please put in public comment. Put public comment in, so we will be able to listen to people before we make decisions about things that affect the people. We have to be able to hear what they have to say. It has been the people who have caught this board making poor decisions and saying, wait a minute, you need to look at this contract. Wait a minute, go back and make sure that this is okay over here. Wait, that's the people who are telling us that. The people are catching things that we are missing. We need to be able to hear the people. Uh, what I'm asking for is not overly excessive. It is us doing our job. Frankly, it's probably minimalistic. We probably should be asking for more time to listen to the public. But I'm asking for this minimum step to ensure that we're able to hear what the public has to say from our teachers, our staff, our students, our admin, everyone, our community liaisons, our CBOs, the people who we don't hear in standing reports anymore. We owe it to them, to give them our ear, and that's all I'm asking for, is for us to be able to listen and do the work of the board.
Thank you very much, board. If you could please try to do this in thirty seconds, because we have three items that we still have to get done. Mr. Christian? If, if, if you have comments, you, you don't have to, but if you do, it's, it's on you.
What we need to do is look at different ones, I mean, different, you know, instead of us being, you know, try the different ones to see what would work best. And then based on that, you go from there. It's simple.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, president Phillips. Um, yeah, I, the reason why I'm supporting trustee Smith Folds' motion again is, I do believe this uh, takes care of a lot of issues that we keep hearing. It has public comment at the beginning of each board meeting for, uh, items on the agenda and on the agenda. And then it allows us to hear the public before we make decisions on items, on discussion and on action items, which I think is absolutely necessary, and what I have been hearing for the last few weeks that it's missing. Um, so I do think it's a really good hybrid model. Um, and if this gets voted through, which I hope it does, uh, we just have to be really thoughtful of, of, um, uh, our own use, obviously, of the mic, um, for time's sake. Uh, but I do think that, first and foremost for me, I want to hear from the public as much as possible, so I'll be supporting, uh, trustee Smith Folds' motion.
Trustee Reckler.
Had it included a cap on the number of minutes per meeting, and had it, uh, contained a, um, length of time to test it, I would have supported it, uh, since it doesn't contain any of those. I'm concerned about the board getting its work done. Thank you.
Trheo.
And, um, I will be supporting trustee Smith Folds', uh, motion, because I feel like it, it is important to listen to the public. And I, I do understand both sides. I do understand, you know, I'm a student, I have to go to school tomorrow, people have work tomorrow. About the same time, you know, people, at least, uh, board trustees and people in the public can, uh, attend these meetings at home as, um, Miss Smith, uh, trustee Smith Folds does. And if it's about, uh, equity and people being able to, uh, stay up long enough to watch these meetings, then, I mean, a lot of people didn't even know about these meetings, at least students don't even know about these meetings existing and happening. And a lot of students don't even know this is happening right now as we speak, so I don't think that, that, that would be an issue. I think instead, we need to just allow the people who know about these meetings, fortunately, enough students especially, um, to be able to have the time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, just a couple of things. Um, the I do not believe that this proposal gives the board enough time to do its work. Um, in addition to that, with the proposal that we're currently doing, I recommended um, that we not do this for the same reasons that people are complaining about now. I know people's hearts are in the right place, but I think when this goes into place, people are going to not like it, and board members are not going to like it, just like they didn't like it the last time. And the third thing is, we need to stop asking Dr. Hurst to bring us proposals and then ignoring the proposals. We're wasting his time, and I wish we would stop doing that. I am going to vote no, and hopefully, we, it doesn't pass, and I would like us to vote for Dr. Hurst's recommendation, which we asked him to bring to us. So, that said, trustee Smith Folds, please start the vote.
Trustee Smith Folds, yes, on this motion. That's who voting on, are we voting on my motion?
I hear you. This is on your motion.
Yes.
Christian.
I'm staying.
Gonzalez, Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Reckler, no.
Trheo, yes.
Phillips, no, motion fails. We're on the original motion, which is Dr. Hurst's motion. Um, we don't have, board, can we please forego the discussion and just vote on Dr. Hurst's recommendation?
The trustee Phillips, I have something I need to say.
Yes, ma'am.
So, a recommendation from the superintendent.
Before you start, board, please, no more than two minutes. It's nine fifty-eight, we have three items, including hiring personnel, and we know we have shortages. So please, two minutes only.
So a recommendation is just that. It's a recommendation, it's a suggestion. It is not anyway saying that there is something wrong with what Dr. Hurst says, but if we are not able to bring back another motion that we think is better, or add to, or delete something, then we are still not doing our job. Dr. Hurst, I appreciate you doing the recommendation. I appreciate you giving a suggestion, but it's just that. You also are there to hear our feedback, because that's what we're here to do. So that's what we did, and that's what we need to continue to do as a board. You continue to bring us recommendations and suggestions, we continue to talk about them and discuss them, and then we continue to see if we need to edit, delete, or add to them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Christian, two minutes, please.
We, we just have to look at, all right, try different ones to see, see what worked best. And we definitely, you know, have to listen to the community and so forth, but see what, see which one is best.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gonzalez, two minutes, please.
Thank you, president Phillips. Um, yeah, I, I wanna say, I'm, I am disappointed that the last one didn't pass. I just don't see the purpose. I think this recommendation actually is worse than what we're currently doing, because I really don't see a point on having public comment after we've taken actions, after we've had a discussion. Like, really, what is the point? Um, so, so I think that actually what we have is better, because at least we'll have an hour to hear community before we take actions or discussion that night. Um, so I would actually encourage us to vote this down, uh, because this recommendation actually, I think, takes us backwards uh, and doesn't actually provide more input from the community. Um, I am really disappointed, um, in both the recommendation and that the, that trustee Smith Folds' motion did not pass.
Thank you, trustee Reckler, two minutes, please, on the motion on the floor, which is Dr. Hurst's recommendation.
Um, I don't really have anything. Um, I'd like to have public comment before action and discussion items, and I'd also appreciate a time to test. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Trheo, Trheo, uh, two minutes on the motion that's on the floor, and then we have to vote.
Uh, I'd like to thank Dr. Hurst for, uh, making this recommendation, but I agree with, uh, trustee Gonzalez, that it wouldn't move us forward in getting to have the public, uh, have the public's voice be heard more, as what I hope most of us here are hoping to expand on and hoping to. expand on and hoping to, to get more of in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I support Dr. Hurst's recommendation. That's my comment. Trustee Smith Folds, please start the vote.
Trustee Smith Folds, no.
Christian?
Christian abstain.
Gonzalez, oh, no.
Reckler, no.
Trujillo, no.
Phillips, yes. We have Board, I know that the public and their comments are extremely important. But we have spent more time talking about public comment than frankly, we spend talking about teaching and learning. Um, I hope we have went through this process for better or for worse. I hope that we can just let this lie because I, 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 I'm be honest with you, I don't want to bring this back for us to keep having the same conversation over and over. It's not a good use of our time. So what we have is what we have. Um, I'm not putting this back on the agenda because we have bigger things to do. And, and it has come to multiple meetings. So that said, um, we are going to go to item E one, certificated board authorization. Ms. Williams?
Alright, good evening. This is, um, we have two actions this evening. One is the very, I'm not sure which one is first. One is the variable term waiver provided applicants with additional time to complete the requirements for the credential um, and asking for approval on this item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, Board, any questions on this item? Okay, seeing none. There you go.
Thank you. Sorry. I was trying to move this quickly. I make a motion to approve this item.
Is there a second?
I know.
Second.
Uh, okay, so it was moved by Gonzalez Hoy, seconded by Christian. Board, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Trustee Smith Folds, can you begin the vote?
Trustee Smith Folds, yeah.
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Trujillo, yes.
Phillips, yes. Alright, motion carries. Now we're going to go to item E two, which is certificated provisional internship permit.
The provisional internship permit was created in response to the phasing out of the emergency permit. It allows an employing agency to hire an individual who has not yet met the subject matter competency requirements needed to enter an internship program. We are asking for approval for this this evening as well.
Board, any questions? Okay, seeing none.
President Phillips, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Gonzalez Hoy. Is there a second? A second.
A second.
Okay, seconded by Christian. Alright, so it's been moved by Gonzalez Hoy, seconded by Christian. Board, any discussion? Okay, no discussion. Trustee Smith Folds, can you begin?
Trustee Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Trujillo, yes.
Phillips, yes. Motion carries. Now, we had item C one, which was pulled. Um, and it was pulled by Trustee Smith Folds. So Miss Trustee, Mrs., excuse me, Mrs. Trustee Smith Folds, um, the floor is yours.
I pulled the item because I want to talk about the fundraising procedures in light of being in a pandemic and back on campus. This particular, these particular fundraisers are not on campus, but they are, they are going to be some that are going to come to us that are on campus. And I would just like Dr. Wolf to take a minute or two to explain what the new, or Dr. Hurst, whomever, to explain what the new procedures are when it comes to accepting fundraisers on campus or in the time of a pandemic.
So thank you for bringing this up. Um, we are currently limiting visitors on our campus and limiting other activities on campus. So we're going to continue to provide guidance to schools that any fundraisers that they do want to pursue should not be bringing additional traffic onto the campus or creating any large crowds. And so in the, in this case, these are indeed not part of our campus. They're not creating unnecessarily large crowds and we're looking at each and every one of those and making sure that all schools have that guidance. So thank you again for bringing this up and, and forward.
Thank you for that explanation. That's it.
Ma'am, do you want to move the item?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so it was moved by uh, Smith Folds and it was seconded by Gonzalez Hoy. Board, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Trustee Smith Folds, can you begin the vote?
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Trujillo, yes.
Phillips, uh, yes. So we don't have any discussion items uh, this evening. Um, so we are going to move on to comments uh, from the Board of Education. Um, three minutes apiece. And Trustee Smith Folds, um, it's on you. And three minutes is just to make sure everybody has a chance to talk. So Trustee Smith Folds?
We cannot compromise our standards. We have to say what needs to be said and not just what wants to be heard. We are in the fourth week of school and we're not being successful. We don't have the right or the luxury to forget the board policy that got us here. This is a mess we created. The district opened a hundred percent full in person without the freedom to be innovative, the resources to keep the promises made, or the support to implement the policy successfully. I'm asking that the board release the superintendent from that strict mandate. Allow him the space to add, edit, and delete what needs to be so that we have an implementable plan to keep kids in school. Left as is, create zero sustainability. Parents, students, teachers, admin, and district staff will be burnt out by Halloween. The ego and the pride from some of this board is likely the tinder to which everyone in this district will burn. We cannot, and I mean, we cannot be both the firemen and the arson. We cannot continue to cause the fires that we are touting to be putting out. No one on this board will melt at ten thirty-one. We need to get the work done or add more meetings. The most important part, or one of the most important parts of our job is to keep people safe. Safety only becomes complex when it becomes economic and political. Zip codes should not dictate or predict the response or the triggered reactions. As long as we continue to blame, we cannot be held responsible or accountable for what must be accomplished. This is a mess of our own making. We must right all of these wrongs. Poor choices, poor choices in wording has caught up to us. On a scale where one is low and ten is high, we need to strive to minimally provide an eight. We must not allow mediocrity to be the standard. Service is at a, service that is at an eight means we are constantly and diligently striving for better. A one means we're not serving. A six means we're serving when it's easy. And an eight means we're on our way to the top. We got a greater on paper. As the district and as the board, we will continue to repeat what we do not repair. The board's silence is actually screaming. We must repair communication. We must repair testing. We must repair mitigation strategies. We must repair the SEO curriculum. I am still asking to address adult school. We have adult students who are fighting for their right to learn their way. We must not stay quiet. This is a huge educational equity issue. We must address standing reports. Removing this from all of the agendas was a mistake and a unilateral decision that has further cut this board off from what is happening in the district. We do have students back in school and we have to address all the issues that pertain to them, including the dress code. Just because it's not important to some members of the board or as important, doesn't mean it shouldn't be discussed. This is an archaic policy that needs to be talked about. We need to look at transportation or the lack thereof for all students in the district. Having one point of entry and exit at our high schools and having the bus schedule not take that into account, that it delays students getting to the bus is a problem and we need to make sure that our students are able to get home safely and timely. AIDS in the TK classrooms were taken away. We can't wait for the state to mandate what the district already knows is a necessity for learning. We need to look at other districts, what they're doing.
If I may, you, you're.
You may not, you may not.
I'm gonna finish because I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish saying what I have to say because it's extremely important that everybody has an opportunity to talk, not just you. Mr. Gonzalez Hoy ran a timer. I didn't do it. He ran a timer. And he did it fairly. And you're over the time and now you're taking somebody else's time.
I understand. The board can sent me. We need to discuss facing equity in the school district, equity in our hiring practices, equity in COVID response, equity in the supports given to black students. After this meeting, I will still ask for the public comment to be brought back. Just because you are tired doesn't mean we stop. We have to continue the count. We have to continue the conversation. In my last sentence, accountability is not a bad thing or a good thing. It's not for rewards or punishment. It keeps our conscious feet to the fire. Warm or burned, the accountability is going to come. Thank you.
Mr. Christian? Um, Okay, so what the translator just said, um, is that we need to have one voice at a time. Um, for better or worse, I am chairing the meeting. So if I began to speak, I would appreciate it if people just let me say what I need to say because I'm saying it for a reason. Um, we now have seventeen minutes left and five people have to um, speak. And we have some closing things that we need to do. So board members, if you can do two minutes, that would be great.
President Phillips, sorry, Trustee Smith Folds can have half my time since that's what she took. I'll only take a minute.
Thank you, sir. That's kind of you.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, thank you very much. I was finished. I concluded. Thank you, though. I appreciate that support.
Mr. Christian, you have three minutes.
Alright, thank you. Uh, first, I just want to thank Dr. Hurst and all the staff uh, for the presentation this evening. Um, all those who they're working digitally hard and we just want to thank you for your hard work because a lot goes into what you're doing. Uh, I want to thank all of our teachers throughout the district, all of our classified staff. Um, everybody has been working very hard in the midst of this pandemic. Um, and we have to show the love to one another. Um, and that's how you get through. And when we care about our students, we care about everybody and we want to see the best things happen and we want to see growth in our district to push to another level, but it takes work and it takes togetherness and, and not being divided. Um, and then also the community to hear the voices of the community and responding to the voices and being representative of our districts of our area and as a, a district. Uh, we, we have a lot to do and we just don't have time to waste. Time is moving and, and if we don't use our time right, you know, time is moving. So the winter month is coming and we're still in the midst of COVID. We gotta really look at a lot of the things we're going to be affected. There's going to be a lot of sickness. We can't argue over this and that. No, we need to put our minds to doing the work and making sure that stuff is being done. So we have a lot to do. And so I just want to give encouragement to all of us is to focus our mindset to the work of the task at hand and really do what we should be doing. We in this to win, to make it better. And I just want to say to the community at large, everybody that's listening, we have a lot to do, but if we fuss and fight and have quarrels among each other, we cannot go to the next level because it's too much um, confusion. And when you got confusion, you can't get anywhere. So I want to encourage us, stay focused, let's do right and let's push forward because we got it agendas to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to very quickly share my perspective of the cap of virtual school uh, and the waitlist. Uh, like I mentioned before, I've been hearing from families uh, who have not been to school um, and are just waiting to get into the virtual academy. Um, I do not support a cap right now. Um, I think it would be the wrong thing to do. I think that if there are families who don't want to send their kids to school in person um, and then they don't get into the school, they will go to a charter or they will go to a private school, or they won't send their kids to school at all. Uh, as we see in the, in the uh, diversity of the virtual school so far, uh, it is mostly Latino and black students. Um, and that would break my heart if we just are not able to serve every single one kids of, of our kids, especially with uh, our enrollment going down. Um, so I just want to share my perspective because I, 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 I am not comfortable with that. Uh, but I am one, just one voice, of course. Um, I did want to say very quickly to our community that it is essential that we vote no on the upcoming recall election for our governor. Um, if we were to lose our governor, uh, Newsom, it would really destroy education, not just our funding, but everything we're fighting for. Um, so you'll have until September fourteenth to vote and vote no. And lastly, I do have two requests for the agenda items very quickly. Uh, I did want to reconsider my vote for an advocate slash lobbyist um, uh, to help us in the state and I did want to agendize uh, uh, bringing back reports from parent groups, unions, and committees. Thank you so much and thank you staff for all you're doing. Uh, let's remember to lead with kindness and love of why we're here.
Reckler, three minutes.
Thank you. So I too also want to thank everybody who's working in schools uh, and supporting schools and supporting families and supporting students. I want to remind everybody that we're still in crisis and these people, all of us have taken on a lot. I appreciate you, you know, people are giving it everything they have. It's not easy right now. Um, I also want to welcome Ryan Phillips to the team. Welcome. If by now he hasn't signed off and decided to do something else, I'm really excited to have you here and I can't wait to see what you do. Um, I want to thank district staff for not hiding anything, not sugarcoating anything. And I also want to encourage and uh, thank everybody for your collective spirit, your collected spirit of solution-oriented, problem-solving. Uh, that's what we need right now. I want to thank the community for calling out the gaps and somebody called me on the phone and told me that they felt sorry for me. And I was like, you know, I don't mind this at all. These are people that are trying to keep us safe and want more. They want more safety. They want it to be better. I don't mind this at all. I mean, if you want to talk about school boards that are up to their knees and in, you know, craziness, just look outside of our circle where people are coming into school board meetings and fighting over masks and violence and having tires slit and, you know, I mean, it's very nasty out here and, and I, I don't feel any of that at all because people are trying to make it better and I really appreciate that. Um, uh, for a couple of upcoming items, um, I also think that we really need to get on advocacy and look at putting somebody in Sacramento to help us. There are some really dire things coming up. I mean, I think of losing thirty million dollars a year. Oh, boy, we're not going to like that. So if we can get somebody in the room who's going to write a, a right policy for us and be our advocate in the room when it's being written, I think we need to bring that back and look at it. I'm interested once again in the vaccine mandate and I've been holding a lot in about the online school um, for a very long time, but I think that there's a, and I'm going to say it nicely, I'm going to hold the board member rant, but I think there's a humongous opportunity here um, every day, not just for COVID. I think there is a true opportunity to do this really well and pick up students in our district and outside of our district. And I think you need to stabilize what you're doing now, but I think that this is a, a wave and, and future that, that should be explored much more fully. explored much more fully. I am going to send, send in a number of comments on masking. I think there's also a lot of data that I'd like to receive on enrollment, on free and reduced lunch. I'll send all of that in separately. I think it'd be very helpful for the board and for the community.
Ten seconds.
And I'm done. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you to everyone for, you know, teachers, staff, the board, everyone for just everything guys are doing in this situation. I had some stuff written down, but honestly, I had just decided not to look at it because, I mean, this is just a, it's a very interesting place to be as a student. This is one of the most interesting things I've ever signed up for, and I like that in a way. You know, teaches you a lot about, about people that you would have just not known about otherwise, and that can be a good and a bad thing. And I think maybe just, yeah. Just, yeah, I think being here is just, it's just an experience as a student. I hope that, I wish that I knew more. I really ask that I am updated more. There's a lot of these things, these discussions and mentioning things that I hear from other board members, and I honestly have no idea what they are, which is unfortunate, and I'd like to be more in the loop about things because I don't know some of these past agenda items or some of these policies. I just, I don't know. So, I just, I go with it, and I just see what's, what's next. And I, I do think that we should do better to listen to the community. I think it's a little bit disrespectful to say that there are things more important than public comment because we can't do things unless we hear from the public. Honestly, I don't think we can. I don't think we should do things without listening to the public first because that's, that's not democracy. I think we definitely need to listen to, to people and make the time for that, even if it means that we have to stay up until eleven. We can do these meetings from home if needed. If that's an issue, you can have more meetings. I think we just need, we need to listen to the public and the students and keep everyone updated. That's, that's my most important thing. Just keep everyone updated. Students don't know what's going on. Like I said, I still, I don't get emails about board meetings happening. I'm just, I'm on the board. That's why I, I know these are happening, but besides that, I had to discover the board through someone else who happened to, to know about it. It's kind of just something you hear about your, oh, did you guys know there was a board? I didn't know. Now I know. Now I'm here, but please make sure students are definitely aware that there is a board because we are here, and that's just ridiculous, the fact that students don't even know that. You know, it's not like, it's just not public knowledge for students. So, please do better work on that, and yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The first thing I'll start with is the comments that Dr. Wool made about attendance and the drop. This is what I was talking about in the past, when it sounded like I was the little chicken saying the sky is falling. This is what I was talking about. It really is falling, and not necessarily due to any fault of our own, but we do need to do something about it. I'm very happy to hear Mr. Gonzalez Hoy say that he wants to bring back the advocate discussion. He is the second person who voted no that has told me that now, so we can definitely revisit that. I want to say to Mr. Booker, you're doing a yeoman's job. I know that you are exercising humility when you say that you have done a subpar job, but the truth is that you've done a Herculean job, and I was ribbing you a little bit earlier, but I want you to know. I want the public to know that you are working your behind off, and because predation did not do what it was supposed to do, doesn't mean that you have not been doing what you are supposed to do, and you have identified with your team and Dr. Hurst that we need to make a change, and we're doing that. So, I want to let you know, and I want the team, which is all of us who are working on this issue, to know that I see you, that we see you as a board, and that we appreciate you, and that is from the bottom of my heart. You are doing yeoman's work. The last thing that I want to say before we leave is it got a little bumpy at different parts, but board, we had a good meeting. We got through our work. We got through it on time, and we resolved what we could, and we addressed everything that was on this agenda thoroughly. So, I just want to say to you all, good job. We did go, I think, a little long. We're going right down to the wire, and what I want you to remember is that there are only six of us here tonight, so if the seventh person was here, we could not have actually done all of those questions that we did and actually get out at ten thirty. So, when there are opportunities to flex a little bit, like tonight, we'll try something new. But again, if all seven of us were here, there's no way we could have pulled this off and gotten out at ten thirty. So, that concludes my comments. Thank you again, staff, for everything that you've been doing. Public, thank you for your patience and working with us because we really could not do this without you, and we do it for you. The next scheduled Board of Education meeting is on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. That is a regular meeting, and that is it. You all have a beautiful night. We love you, and we appreciate you.